If we could do both of them in the same year, Carl would say leave them there. But when he saw that you moved out West Union, he felt as though that was more urgent than the rail trail due to the traffic volumes over a public road than the pedestrian traffic over a rail trail.
What did the state give you as an option?
And you...
Excuse me, Tim. What did the state give you as an option to that dam repair? Take it out?
Well, that's different, yeah.
The dam?
Yeah.
I don't think the letter... The letter didn't get into about taking it out. I mean, we talked about that internally, and that's why I brought that up to Lee, just as I threw it out there to say, what if, you know, the dam was removed? But that's something... We're gonna have to obviously study that. A consultant's gonna have to be hired to look at all of that. As I said, the letter had some very specific things that had to be fixed and some monitoring that they wanted to happen right away. And then by that December 15th date... And then they said by next year, we have to have a study underway and, I guess, report back to them with what the findings of that study are.
So this 50 grand is for the study?
The 50 grand was a placeholder for, I think, a study for repairs. Carl hasn't had time to go get a consultant to find out what a study would cost, so he's asking to slide that lineup because he didn't want to make it confusing. It was already in the matrix, so he's asking for it to come up. We don't feel as though the study would be 50,000. It would probably be, you know, the study and then whatever. We will come back to you next year. We have a better defined scope of work, and then we can propose whatever the cost is for a fix.
All right. Well, anyway, the... To get back to what I was saying, the rail trail slope culvert repair was prioritized as a one and urgent by the department, yet the uncanonic dam was a two. I understand the reasoning for wanting to move that in because you got a letter from the bridge, the dam bureau. But even your West Union Street Bridge head wall repairs were prioritized as a two, which is necessary. So we're moving a one out, which is an urgent, and we're moving a pair of twos in. So I just question the priorities.
Do we want to take and break that move or leave it up to the judgment of the Budget Committee and the Selectmen to iron out the wrinkle?
I'll make a motion to make the changes as requested by the Public Works Department.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Phil. Any discussion on that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm not quite sure how the anticipated grants on page five are budgeted. And, for example, maybe you can answer this, Tim or somebody else. What is the certainty of getting these anticipated grants?
Anticipated grants are for projects that are generally in the out years because they don't... We don't put them into the matrix unless they have a grant in hand.
Okay. So that leads me to the next question on the one that Megan just asked us to move, which was line 153.
196 is the West Union Street anticipated grant.
Right. The anticipated grant is in 2013, but she's asking us to move the expenditure into 2012 before... So you'd be spending the money before you even knew you had it for sure. Is that a problem?
It's a problem for them if they don't get the bridge grant because it's a one point... What's the total cost of that? $80,000. So wherever they're gonna find $80,000 is their problem. See, the project can be put into the matrix and moved up. If they don't get the grant, they can't do the project. We're not authorizing them to spend $80,000. We're authorizing them to move up 50,000 of it, or whatever that number was, 72,000.
72,000, yeah.
And then with any bridge grant, you have to spend the money first, and then the state reimburses you anyway.
Right.
That's how bridge grants work.
All of which are subject to budget discussions anyway, so quite...
Well, generally speaking, you don't... You have to do all your engineering and make a submission to the state, and then they either approve or deny your bridge funding. So you have to pay for the engineering in any event.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I'm in the middle of one right now.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? This is not a public hearing, but looking for an opinion from the board. Are we... We're short two or three members this evening.
We have a motion and a second.
Well, that was for the changes.
That was for the changes.
Changes, yeah.
Okay. Then any further discussion on that motion? Here and now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so you can move those around in the official documentation. Now, going back to the approval of this program. Is the board comfortable enough to take a vote this evening, or do you wish to other members of the board to have an opportunity to weigh in? Or do we want to handle it ourselves this evening in the next two minutes?
Mark? I'll have to admit, I don't understand this process completely and haven't analyzed this or looked over the matrix as closely as I would like or as I probably should before voting on it, but I just wanted to put that out there, sort of a disclaimer.
When does the Budget Committee process begin? Anybody got a handle on that?
I think the Selectmen get it first, right, Nick? Phil?
Yeah, the Selectmen get the department head budgets first. They usually attempt an effort at joint presentations.
Yeah, we have a... I was just trying to think. Well, we have to put... We'll be putting the budgets together, presenting to the Budget Committee.
Don't you usually ask for department heads by September 1st?
We don't have another meeting until September 8th, is it? Love it.
Yeah, it's the 8th.
8th? So that's our next scheduled meeting. We don't have a second meeting this month. So if there's gonna be any prolonged consideration, I'd like to hear about it this evening. Get down.
Mr. Chairman, this is a planning document. This is not a budget of any sort. We prepare this document to assist the planning... The Selectmen and the Budget Committee with their deliberations. So delaying the vote on this would be a bad thing, in my opinion, because they need to get it as soon as possible so that they can begin to review it and to make their budgets up. If any member of this committee wants to change something, it's at the discretion of this committee to vote on it tonight and do so. But to delay the vote to the September date, I think, would be a disservice to the budgetary process in the town.
Barbara?
Based on my knowledge of the process, I agree with Tim.
Phil?
One... What Tim has said is accurate. And the thing is, is that here we are. This is August 11th. Many people are on vacation, as we see how many aren't in here. This committee meets regularly, as is done every year for ever since we've had it through the summer months, away from their families while we're all enjoying the time. I don't think that it's a good thing to delay it because what we're basically saying to the members who are volunteers is that all their hard work that they've spent and the time that they've spent, especially during the summer months, to prepare this in a timely fashion to bring it to us during August, and for us to delay it for several weeks, I don't think is appropriate.
All right. Then somebody needs to step up and make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept it, the CIP has presented with the change.
A motion by Phil. Do I hear a second?
Second, sorry. Forgot it was my jaw.
A seconded by Barbara. Any discussion on the motion?
I can't second my own major.
Yes, you can.
The discussion on the motion is, if you have a particular interest in comment on this, Mark, then I would be working with Selectmen and Budget Committee if there's something that you don't agree with in here.
For example, if I saw some of the spending items were too high, for example, I'd work with the Budget Committee on that.
Right.
Right?
Correct.
Make a pare back what you guys did.
We are not a budgetary committee. We are a planning committee.
But you're still asking us to approve this whole matrix, which includes expenditures?
And then...
If they just had timing and rarities, maybe they'd be okay.
Our... This matrix is not any commitment to the taxpayers to spend a dime, Mark. This is simply a planning tool to give to the next two committees. It's their job to dissect this and move things around as they see financially sound to do so.
Yes, Phil?
I just wanna... So Mark is aware, we are not approving any expenditures.
That's right.
We have no capacity statutorily to approve any type of spending in this process. This is strictly for planning, and the expenditures that are in here are strictly for numbers. The purpose of the matrix is to balance the numbers out over the years so you don't have spikes, to try to flatten them out. It's a planning... This goes along with the master plan, which is the function of the planning board, and that's all we're doing. We are not approving any expenditures. It's just a tool.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation, yeah.
Everybody satisfied? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Did you ask for abstentions?
Again, wish to say thank... Excuse me?
Did you ask for abstentions?
Abstentions.
No one abstains for this. Any abstentions?
Maybe he has such good hearing, he recognizes every individual voice he's heard.
Apparently.
Any abstentions? I didn't hear any.
Okay. All right.
Motion carries. I do wish to thank the committee and its efforts. I know this is not an easy task. Moving forward, Brian. I'm gonna save minutes and all that stuff until last. We have some presenters here this evening. I don't want to hold them up. We can do that at the end of the meeting in a few short moments. So moving straight into our regularly scheduled hearing agenda on the new business we have, map 34, lot 29, completeness review, site plan and conditional use permit hearing for proposed demolition of existing onsite structure and to construct a new convenience store with gasoline sales, Cumberland Farms Inc., Two South Mass Street Zone commercial. My understanding is also that this had a variance hearing and that there was an approval recently. Is that correct, Brian?
That's correct.
Now, we are here for a completeness review. I'm not sure if we're here and for what reason, but I will turn it over to you, Brian, to explain to us what it is that we're supposed to be doing before these gentlemen go to all this trouble to set things up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is a notice public hearing tonight for acceptance and review of this project. It's Cumberland Farms project. They plan on demolishing the existing building and reconstructing a new building in its place that would include a convenience store as well as gasoline sales. They submitted their application in a timely manner and requested one waiver due to the fact that their variance hearing was still in process. So their application was not able to... They did not able to... Were not able to include their notice of decision from the zoning board because that notice had not been issued from the zoning board at that time. However, you should have been given a copy of the notice. When we sent our packets out to you, we did have that ready for you. So that variance was approved. They had requested variances for the setbacks to be encroached upon on all four sides and then also for the sign to be internally illuminated. Both of those variances were approved by the zoning board, and that was on August 2nd from the zoning board. Now, I've also recommended that there is no regional impact from... By this application. And some key considerations, the applicant will be asking for several conditional use permits and waivers from the planning board, from the development regulations, and some of the conditional use permits, I think, go to requirements in the zoning ordinance for parking but are allowed to be granted by the planning board versus by the zoning board through a variance, as specifically allowed in the zoning or in the ordinance. And those are listed in numbers five and six of the other considerations in the report. Let's see. The first one, they're asking for four light poles and one freestanding sign to exceed the height restrictions of section 8.2. The second one, the driveway distance from the street intersections and from existing driveways on the same lot and a number of driveways permitted on each lot, restrictions of section 7.4.3.1. The third one is parking requirements, to be able to provide less than the minimum required parking per section 7.5.2. And then sign content to be able to be changed electronically. And those are... Those four items are all requests that they're making for conditional use permits, and those are allowable through the zoning ordinance. Number six states the requested waivers that they are asking for. The first is Appendix A, section 9B sidewalks required in the commercial district, Appendix A. Second one is Appendix A, section 8C3, that states that driveways cannot intersect a public road within 50 feet from the nearest sideline of another public road. And the third one is Appendix A, section 8C8, that driveways should intersect a street at 90-degree angles and not less than 60 degrees. They have provided a letter, which was attached to the application, that details out these requests in finer detail, and hopefully you've had a chance to go through those. Recommendations from staff tonight would be that you hear the applicant's presentation, go through the discussion of waiving the notice of decision for the variance, you know, being submitted with the application, just kind of a formality, I think. And then find that the site plan does not have a regional impact, accept the proposed site plan for review, and then open the public hearing, listen to any butters that may be here to speak, and then continue the site plan hearing for further consideration to a month from now, September 8th, 2011. So I'll turn the time back over to the chair.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I can make a motion to find that the site plan does not have a regional impact and accept this proposed site plan for review.
Second. Well, are we getting ahead of ourselves here?
Thought we usually do that before we listen to the presentation.
Well...
That's what happened to pass, isn't that true?
Yes, but if item number one is what... Which is number three on the recommendations list, finding this site plan proposal does not have a regional impact will be the first item up for discussion.
Okay, then.
All right. Now, we have a motion on the floor that says it does not have a regional impact, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? I'd like to hear why it doesn't have a regional impact. Brian?
Mr. Chair, staff felt that because it's the same gas station and that it wouldn't necessarily be increasing the traffic volumes by adding a new business in that location and also due to the fact that it's not in close proximity to other cities and towns, affecting them via noise or other nuisance-type effects, that it would not be a regional impact.
The fact that their customers come from a broad base other than Goffstown has no impact? Is that what you're saying?
I don't believe it would be considered a regional impact worthy of noticing other cities and towns.
Okay. Any other further discussion on that by members of the board? Seeing then, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair debates, no. I believe it has a regional impact.
Because people come from other towns?
I didn't say that.
Well, why do you think it has a regional?
That's a question I asked.
Well, would you like to discuss the issue?
No. I voted no.
All right. Well, the other half of the motion was to accept the proposal for site.
No variance.
Well, we don't have to waive the variance because everybody hasn't noticed the decision.
Well, I think that we need to waive the variance.
Number two is the next subject for discussion, which is to waive the variance notice of decision being submitted at the time of application, which is it was not technically submitted at the time. We do have one now.
Okay.
But they surely understand that there's still an appeal period in effect. I think they... I think probably everybody knows that.
You want to make a motion because you're leading?
So moved.
I have a motion by Barbara. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Tim. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing then, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. I'd like to look at item number four. Accept this proposed site plan for review, complete and ready for review. It's the... That this application, along with the documents submitted, if you've had an opportunity to review all those, are sufficient to accept it as complete and ready for review. I'm looking for a motion for that, to that effect.
Looked so moved.
Motion by Barbara. It is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Phil. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing then, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, what's the board's pleasure in terms of waivers and other requests by the applicant in terms of decisions that might affect the presentation?
Mr. Chair?
Or the outcome? Yes?
Might I recommend that the stated waivers in the other consideration section be discussed next meeting?
I'm sure if I can speak.
Barbara?
I don't... These are not items that were necessary for the application to be complete. They're requesting it as part of their application. I'm sure it will be addressed in their presentation. I know they are addressed in the materials, and I would expect that we would discuss them after hearing their proposal and further consideration. I don't see any reason to specifically address them tonight.
Is that a consensus to the board? Okay. In hearing that...
I have a question, Brian.
Yes?
If we don't vote on it now, does that delay them, the applicant?
We'll have to take up... We'll have to take up each of the individual requests.
Since we've accepted it.
Either at the end of this meeting or after their presentation or at a further meeting scheduled in September.
I just say, you know, if they're under the gun, I hate to see them delayed by us not acting on it, but if there's no particular urgency on their part, then it's okay.
Well, I'll make just one comment, that I took the time to read the minutes of the zoning board of adjustment presentation, and I believe there's enough public interest that the opportunity for the public speech should be severely allowed in this particular case, to make sure that we hear what the public has to say and those that do attend that want to speak about certain aspects of the project, so that the board can ensure in their own behalf or members of the board that it's sufficiently addressed if they feel that it's important enough to be addressed.
And that needs to be properly noticed, right? And tonight wouldn't have been... Provided enough notice to the abutter?
Well, I think the notice is there. I'll tell you about it. The notice is sufficient. It's just that I think it's gonna take a good deal of time. I want to make the applicant aware that he has the opportunity to, first, to present, and then I'll open the public hearing and we can hear some of the basic information. It may not be something we want to decide on this evening.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Do we have to act on the 65-day clock?
I would say that after we hear their presentation, we're able to judge the complexity of the project. We might want to... We will consider that at that point in time. We may decide that we don't need that.
Okay.
Well...
Yes?
Our report from staff says staff needs additional time for review, and the applicant has requested the waiver. So I, you know, I'm... We can listen to the applicant, but I don't know why we're making this a point of discussion.
Then make a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive the 65-day clock at the applicant's request.
Second.
Seconded... Motion by Tim, seconded by Barbara. Any discussion of that motion? Hearing then, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. So we've accepted the 65-day clock waiver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The next item on there would be item number one, which is to hear a presentation from the applicant, and I will start out with whomever wishes to speak first.
Don't all jump out at once.
I lean up against the wet paint, so if I have blue on my back, I hope it's entertaining for... Good evening. For the record, my name is John Marsh, project manager with the Cumberland Golf Group, representing the Cumberland brand this evening. With me also this evening is Scott Boursier, who is the engineer on the project from Du Boys and King, as well as FX Bruton, who is the project attorney. Should we... Should the board's pleasure be to get into some more technical details? I'll be enlisting them to assist me in that this evening. Just a quick... A brief history of the site. Cumberland Farms purchased this property in 2003 from Exxon and flew it as a Gulf service station. And a couple of years ago, we took it back over from the Cumberland side and actually did some work inside to convert it to a convenience store. There's also a Dunkin' Donuts tenant currently inside the existing facility. What I have presented up here first, board, is the existing conditions on the site as we have today. We have an approximately 1,900-square-foot building on the property with four fueling islands, eight fueling positions in total, situated parallel to South Mass Road. Underground fueling tanks are here. We have three curb cuts on the property, one on Mountain Road and two on South Mass, all of which are not in the most improved and pristine condition at the moment. Also have parking areas that extend down both sides of the building. That is sort of the limit of the parking that's on the property. The backside of the property here, it's a fairly significant drop to the abutting property behind us and also a bit of a grade differential between here and Mountain Road. There's also an area here of some tree growth and there's a large gully actually between this property and the abutting property. Those are the existing conditions that we see today on the property. What we are proposing for this property is a complete demolition of all the existing facilities with the exception of the underground storage tanks, which were installed in 1998. Double wall fiberglass, still fully compliant, so we would leave those in the ground and build a site around that portion. We're proposing a 3,232-square-foot convenience store. There would be no Dunkin' Donuts tenant any longer on the separate property. We also would be proposing to do three gas islands in lieu of the four that are there today and reconfiguring them to be perpendicular to South Mass Road for what we feel is a better circulation on the property as far as segregating convenience store customers and gas customers on the property as they circulate. We have vehicles queued here to fuel that allows the rest of the site to still flow to the parking areas, whereas today where you have the building and the canopy in such a fashion that when you have all these fueling positions filled up, the site is basically cut in half. It does not really make for the best use of the space as well as safety of motorists on the property and, you know, tank deliveries and all those things. It's not the most ideal. As part of this redevelopment, we also would be significantly enhancing the green space areas with landscaping. Along the South Mass roadside, we're proposing a stone wall with significant amounts of vegetation on the front island. This was something that we felt would be an appropriate accommodation for concerns that were raised by neighbors specifically across the street with the use of vehicles at night and headlights shining into residential windows. So we felt as though that we could mitigate a lot of that with, again, heavy vegetation, stone walls, things of that nature in the front to help to dissipate some of that concern. front, to help to dissipate some of that concern. It also would provide somewhat of a streetscape, which I think in this, on our property, obviously is pretty lacking at this point. It's very underdeveloped. As well, one of the other features on the property, again, basically the property slopes down on all three sides, so as a function of making the grading work on the property, we would be proposing retaining wall that would run on this side of the property with a, with a fence, a privacy fence on top of it, to hopefully, while we'll be losing trees on this side, which I know is also a concern of one of the abutters, we would hopefully be, between the height of the retaining wall, as well as the privacy fence on top of it, still providing privacy under the new development for, for the abutting property. Along with that, we are, again, improving the curb cuts. We'd be improving this curb cut to, you know, with, with appropriate curving. This curb cut would actually be converted into a one-way-in only, and then this, obviously, the Mountain Road curb cut would also be improved and striped appropriately, which we feel is a, is a great benefit from a traffic standpoint. So that's, that's sort of the overview of, of what we're doing. I certainly, again, have the ability to go much more into detail with the technical portions of the project, should the board want to hear it. Sort of, it's at your discretion how much in detail you'd like us to go. You can discuss lighting, drainage, whatever, whatever the board's pleasure at this time.
Just have one question.
Sure.
At the moment. The curb cut on Mountain Road.
Mm-hmm.
Is that moving away from the intersection with Mass Road?
It will be moving slightly away from the intersection, yes.
And I'm assuming somewhere in the documents, it shows how they've corrected the, the grade as it comes up into that parking lot now?
We have actually, Mr. Boursier and I have worked ex, rather exhaustively on that issue, because we also have the consideration of the tank field here.
Yep.
So, we have taken that into consideration as part of the design. We certainly can, again, we can look at the grading, we have the ability to show that, if the board would like to see, but we definitely took that into the, because it is quite a drop to Mountain Road.
Okay. Members of the board, any questions of the applicant at this point?
Yes. On the one-way entrance.
Mm-hmm.
On that corner, how are you proposing to control that as a one-way?
At this time, we feel the best control feature is, we signage it, obviously, appropriately to say, to say, you know, "Do not enter," or whatever the signage would need to be to designate that, but also the configuration of it to be angled in such a way that to make a, try to make this maneuver is really kind of a problematic thing for anyone to try to do, by the way we've angled it. So, we feel as though the config, the, the shape and configuration of it versus, and as well as the signage, we feel will be appropriate to dissuade people from trying to make that maneuver.
I'm more concerned about people.
Exit.
Trying to exit.
Okay. Yeah, as I said, we typically, in situations like this, would, would use signage, "Do not enter," or "Entrance only," or certainly if there's something the board has in mind that would be more appropriate. We're certainly open to any suggestions, but that's typically how we would handle that.
Thank you. Barbara.
You mentioned the new building will be, I think, 3323 square feet. What's the size of the building now?
It's approximately 1,900 square feet.
And what is the, the paved surface area of the lot as proposed, as com, as it is currently?
Maybe if we have all of that. Was it on one of my sheets? I apologize if it was. If it was, it was in print far too small for me to read.
You're looking for, to deter, to determine the lot coverage, Barbara?
Yeah. And then I've got a follow-up question.
The answer that, that Barbara's probably looking for is.
On what sheet?
What's green now, and what it was in the past, and what's paved in buildings in the past, and what is paved in buildings now? Total square footage.
The paved in the building is still considered impervious, so.
No, I know, that's, that's why I said paved.
If it's not on there, we'll ask for it at a later date.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe it's, I believe it's a fairly even swap between the new and the old. I believe it's.
I think you better figure it out first.
I don't believe.
It's, excuse me, Scott Boursier, Du Bois and King. We have done calculations. Currently, the percent impervious on the site is approximately 70 percent, and the new site is slightly higher at 72, 73 percent.
So that includes the building?
That includes the building, impervious areas of concrete, pavement, curving.
Okay.
Things of that nature.
I think that's what we're looking for.
Um.
Barbara, go ahead.
Further question in regards to the, here's my northeast, west side retaining wall. How, how, what's the, the height of that retaining wall at its highest point?
The maximum heights is approximately about five to six feet, and that height is pretty much in the corner area, the back southerly corner, where those trees are at, and then starts to get shorter as we get closer to South Mass Road.
And how far off the property boundary will that be?
And its closest point here, it's, it's within a couple of feet of the property, roughly line. I believe about three feet.
I'll just say, I ask that question based on experience with town maintenance issues with retaining walls. So when I hear five to six feet, with that much impervious surface over it, next to a non-commercial property, I have concerns about making arrangements for adequate maintenance. On top of that retaining wall, how high is the fence that you're talking about putting up?
We would probably be proposing a six-foot-high privacy fence. I believe it's actually pulled out.
Well, is that probably, or what you're proposing?
Yes.
Six feet? Okay. And in regards to the, what I'm going to refer to as the, the south, the rear side, yes. How far, and I know this was addressed with the ZBA, how close to that property line is the back of the building as proposed, as compared to current?
The building is closer to that property line. I do not have the exact, from the zoning board.
Can you hold this? It might fall down, Brian.
We will be at our closest point, 12 feet from the rear property line.
And what's the closest you are now?
Just over 20. 21, 21 feet, just over.
Okay. And if I can continue.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Let me, I will just, just briefly say, I looked at the snow storage designated on, on the lot, and had serious questions as to why you even bothered, and assume it's dealt with now, so it will be dealt with sometime in the future, but I just thought that was, I'm not even sure is there's, that there's snow storage noted on the current site plan for the Exxon station, but I probably don't, or the Gulf station, so I probably don't want to go there.
Can you, just to add in a note to that, Barbara, can you tell us what sheet the snow storage is indicated on?
For.
If I could just point out on the, on the snow storage issue, we do recognize that this is a very tight site, so we did designate those areas, and our intention is to have those be temporary areas. If you look at actually Note 25, which is part of the sign sealed package.
I can't look at it. It's too small, remember?
I'm sorry. We actually did call on Note 25, "All excess, all excess snow shall be removed to an off-site location."
Well, and I mean, that's what I'm assuming they do sometimes for this site now, so I didn't get too excited about it, but I thought it was sort of amusing. And, but I can see on this plan better than I could see on my sheets, what you have designated as snow is that light green on the Mountain Road.
These areas here, and.
Side, so when it's not, so that's proposed to be dirt? Is that what you're telling me?
No, this will be long-enceded.
Right, so.
Right, but yes, grass. It'll just be an open grassed area.
So that would be where this, okay.
Correct. And it, again, especially in light of the, the winter we just had, I mean, this is, we understand that this site is, and I'm sure many people encounter, the snow removal is an issue, so that's why as part of the signed submission package, we did include that as a note.
Okay. And on the tank, on the, the pump setup.
Mm-hmm.
The, the cars will be faced south to north, I'm assuming, as the pumps are, so you can get, right?
Parallel to the pumps, yeah.
Parallel to the pumps, so they're facing Mass Road, or.
They would be, they're facing the building.
Perpendicular, they're perpendicular.
They're facing the building, or facing Mass Road.
Okay, all right. And, um, as to your conditional use permits, it's my understa, my reading of this, that a number of those relate to current conditions, that you're sort of staying within current conditions. For example, the lights, right, or the sign height. Isn't your proposed sign height lower than the current sign?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
All right.
And as far, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no.
As I say, as far as the lighting goes, it was a function of the formula that's used for the height of some of light poles.
Right.
It was just too problematic for us to make it actually work on the property.
Okay.
That was the question.
All right. And then, in regards to the traffic study that you presented, I had a question as to how your peak periods were determined.
Unfortunately, I am not a traffic engineer, so.
Does anybody here know how that was? Just so you know, that's one of my questions, because I understand what your traffic consultant did in regards to the traffic and the, quote, "loss of the Dunkin' Donuts" from the site, and not adjusting, not decreasing those numbers, but dealing with the business side.
I can speak to, just a teeny bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Megan, have you had a chance to review the traffic study?
No, I only got the drainage study. I don't have the traffic study.
It should have been in, along with the application. You don't have it?
I don't have that.
Okay.
Just for the record, my name, I'm sorry.
Does that mean that during the review process, have you had a technical review meeting with them?
I have, we have one Monday.
One Monday?
Yeah, that's what it is.
I don't know how long it'll go.
Huh?
Let it go until that completes, huh?
Yeah, we'll just let it go until.
Till that's completed.
Until that takes place.
Yeah, and that, that's what I was going to explain, and for the record, my name is Francis Bruton. I'm the attorney for Cumberland Farms, and we do have a technical review meeting on Monday. We also have a meeting scheduled, the abutters, to see what you can address some of their concerns, so I wanted the board to understand that.
Okay.
And we do expect to come back at your next meeting, so our thought was to get through the TR, the technical review committee, and then obviously we will have our traffic engineer, who is from Vannes, here for any questions that you have, so I just wanted to.
Well, you shouldn't have let Brian give me this study before.
I just wanted, we wanted it to be complete.
All right, well then, if I can just pose my question without an expectation of answer, I have a question as to how the peak periods were selected, because it seemed odd to me that a weekday morning was not selected. The four to six during the weekday, I understand. And I guess Saturday midday, 11 to 2, that probably is pretty high traffic, but given the flow of traffic through the village, it seemed odd to me that the morning period was not selected, and it might be because the week, the afternoon traffic is considered the same, but I'm going to have that question, okay?
All right.
And I'm done.
Now that Barbara started us off, if any of the members of the board have a question they'd like to ask the applicant, if you've thought of it during this presentation so far. Seeing none. Do you have any additional comments before I open it up for public comment?
I did actually just want to bring up one other point that I think has been a concern voiced by some of our neighbors, as well as, I think it's important to note that the building size itself, going from the 1,900 to 3,200 square feet, seems to be, at first glance, a tremendous jump in size. And I just, I just want to be clear, in the actual breakdown of the building, you know, how our business runs today versus how it, you know, the business that's standing there today. So, it, it's not really a linear jump, so I, I guess my point is that the, the retail space in the existing building is in the vicinity of 900 square feet today, and the actual retail space in the new building would be, I believe, somewhere in the area of 1,400, I believe I have the numbers in here. But the point being that a lot of what is dedicated to the new, sorry, 1,500 square feet is the, the new proposed retail space. If you look at the floor plan and the package, a lot of the area dedicated to the building is for things like improved, have restrooms, increased storage areas for the things that we offer in our stores today. It's always important to say, well, it, it can, and it, it does jump out at people that that is a tremendous jump in size. The actual retail space itself is, it is increasing by, by an amount, but if you actually look at it as a portion of the whole building for storage areas, walk-in freezers, walk-in clothes, that's where a lot of that square footage goes. I just wanted the board to have an understanding of, if there's some hesitation about, from neighbors, or even the board themselves, about why the building got so large. I think the math kind of bears that out, as to why we are where we are today. So, other than that, I have no further comments.
Okay. Seeing none, thank you for the moment. You'll have an opportunity to speak further.
Okay.
I'm going to open the public hearing, and ask if there's anybody wishing to speak in reference to this application.
Just a comment before public hearing?
Yes.
So it's my understanding that this really is preliminary, that this.
Acceptance hearing.
It's an acceptance hearing, I'm just saying this for purposes of the public hearing, that this needs to go to TRC, that DPW has a fair amount of review work to do for reports, and it can be expected that there's going to be at least another meeting on this before this board. Would that be fair to say?
That is correct, and I think the recommendation was a motion to continue both the public hearing and the, and the presentation till September 8th.
Okay. I just wanted that understood before we got.
So, there will also be a second opportunity for public to speak.
Okay.
Tim.
And also, in the interest of brevity, when the public does speak, we will accept their comments for review, but I don't think we necessarily need to debate comments tonight.
It might be helpful if they have something technical or particular in regards to TRC review, or something.
Could be presented.
So what we're looking for is comments from the public this evening, that we, as a board, can consider. Ask them to be considered for modifications or revisions to their proposed project, okay? Hearing that, who, is there anybody from the public who wish to speak? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and be recognized.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Judy Leclair. My husband and I live at 5 South Mass Street, right across the street from Cumberland Farms. We were at the ZBA meeting last week, and, you know, unfortunately, they approved the variance for the Cumberland Farms to do the, not meet the sideline requirements, and for the sign, and the sign really wasn't a concern of ours. But I think what Mr. Math was just referring to, as far as the size of the store, we live across the street, as, as all of our neighbors did. They were all there last week, with the exception of one, and not one neighbor was in favor of Cumberland Farms developing this non-conforming lot to even more of a non-conforming lot by the size of it. You know, just tonight, I was just trying to take some notes here. You know, from going from 1,900 square feet to 32, I understand.
Judy.
Yes.
We understand that a variance has been granted.
Mm-hmm.
So we will not entertain a discussion about variances that were granted by a prior board.
Okay.
If you're here to consider a site plan, please. And if we can limit our discussion to that, what's been proposed, and the comments, you can make any comments you want, but I won't let an extended discussion of what happened at the ZBA occur here.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. Can I go up to the little chart up there for a minute?
Yes, you may.
Is that okay?
With the ingress coming in from South Mass Street, they have delivery trucks at this point, and tonight was just another example. We had a Pepsi truck this afternoon, came in right through here, and had stopped right here, and the tires were right on Mast, so that nobody could get in this way, and Mountain Road had to come in the backside. The gasoline trucks, if they're coming in through this way here, fully into their fill-up areas here, are going to.
areas here, are gonna end up blocking this area as well. Snow removal, right now, is dumped off the back of the lot. Now they've got two dumpsters back here, so they can't even do that. So now, if, if we have trucks delivering over here, people can come in this way here, but then, you're causing a traffic jam over here, 'cause nobody can get in. That's just really one of our big concerns. And I would, what I would like to see, if they can, is a Mylar, of the old and the new. I think, to me, that'd be very helpful, to see what exactly it's doing for the size of the lot.
In the, uh, drawing set, which you can certainly review, um, we actually have an extra set down there at the end of the table-
I have that piece here, but I don't have the-
But, um, sheet, um, drawing four, shows a dashed imprint of the existing canopy facilities, and the location of the pumps, and the location of the perimeter of the existing store, uh, pretty much as it exists there today, on top of what's proposed. So there is a sheet in the set that where you can compare those two, Judy. Now, in terms of, um, the two com- the comments that you had, are you suggesting that, uh, because of this traffic, that we need to address how they load and unload, um, materials in store, and where they do that on the site?
Absolutely.
Okay?
I want to talk about that.
And then, in terms of the snow removal, um, because of the restrictions on the site, are you suggesting that there be some kind of, if the project is approved, that there be some kind of information referenced to how snow storage and removal is, and occurs on this site?
That's correct.
Alright. Um, did you, and, and you certainly will have another opportunity to speak as this thing moves forward. Okay. Is there anybody else wishing to speak in reference to the project? Yes ma'am, please come forward. Please introduce yourself for the board.
Hello, I'm Teresa Golden, and I'm Thea Butter, directly beside, um, the Gulf Station, to the left. Um, two of my biggest concerns Judy just mentioned, I'm very concerned with loading. Um, right now, gas, um, the gas pumps, um, tankers come in and park right in front of where all those new parking spots are gonna be, and I believe that would be against the rules to park, um, I'm sorry, unload in front of parking spots. So I'd be concerned and would like to know where that will happen in the future.
Is it a timing situation? What time do they show up in a day?
Um, last Friday, they were there at ten minutes of six, in the morning.
Ten minutes of six in the morning?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, I mean, granted, there was probably no one parking there at that time, but actually, at six o'clock in the morning, that place is pretty busy, 'cause I leave my, my home about ten after six. And at six-thirty, I have to wait about fifteen minutes to get out. So there's, there's a difference between six-ten and six-thirty, so. Um, I'm concerned about that. When we had a Butters meeting, in regards to unloading, they had mentioned that they thought their delivery trucks would back up and unload in front of those three spots in front of the dumpsters. And again, they would be blocking, um, parking, but the real concern is, my house is probably ten, fifteen, twenty feet from that area, where they're, now they're gonna move everything over closer to my property line. And unfortunately, the way my house is built, my house is within five to seven feet of my property line. So that means this, this, you know, this tractor trailer could be that close to my house, at any time, a day or night, unloading. So it is a concern. Um, I'm also concerned about the retaining walls. They're gonna make these huge retaining walls. And as you mentioned, right now, there's kind of a gully in between us that kind of catches, captures some of that drainage. And in my, from what I understand, that wall is gonna be really on the property line. So I think that means my property will become the drainage, uh, for that, uh, for the site. There won't be, you know, any leeway for me, um, in that regards. Secondly, the snow has been brought up, um, this site, right now, doesn't currently handle the snow very well. It goes on my property, the property behind, um, the store. I understand they think they're going to, um, have the snow picked up, but my concern is, is, um, usually, they're plowing those, that parking lot around four o'clock in the morning, so that it's ready when their, um, you know, their employees come at five. Um, when are they gonna be, um, you know, taking the snow out at four-thirty? Will these big trucks be coming in and trying, you know, running a track, I don't know what you'd, you'd pick it up with? So these are all, um, concerns. They're kind of gonna build on my property line, and, but right now, that's where snow goes, from this gas station and from me. We kind of just push it together, and there's a boundary. And, um, in the past, the station has built tremendous walls, um, between us, so that the people leaving Gulf can't see my property or my driveway. And it's only been addressed when I call and I address the issue. It, there doesn't seem to be any common sense that the people leaving that lot can't see the driveway right beside them. Um, and they can't see me. So it's kind of a crapshoot getting out of my driveway and making sure no one plows into me.
May I ask a question, then? Their, their plans does, does show, not a lot of great detail, but is your driveway about equal to the edge of your house? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, that's what that line is.
So it's like a little retaining wall there, too?
Yes, yeah.
So, your driveway is really close to the-
Absolutely.
And you have no other alternative on this site?
I also have a back driveway, um, which, um, my fiancee and my tenant uses, but my mother and I park in the front. My mother probably couldn't use the back driveway, 'cause there's a lot of stairs, and, uh, it would be a challenge for her to go up two flights of stairs to get to her place.
Sorry for the interruption, please continue.
No, I appreciate the question. I'm very concerned about the vegetative buffer. I brought that up with the zoning board as well. Right now, there's very, uh, large trees, uh, along the whole property line, which, um, gives me some relief from the lights and the noise. Um, I don't think their alternative will protect me from those things. Um, and it's nice to have that buffer, so I don't have to see that property, not the whole year, of course, in the winter, you can still see it, 'cause the leaves are gone, but, um, it is a buffer that's been there for many years, and it would be, I think, a shame to take those trees down.
Okay.
And, parking, I've kind of already mentioned my concerns with loading, unloading in front of it. They're also doubling up parking spots, which I think most people aren't gonna use those three spots in front of cars. I don't think most people would ever park behind someone else's car, when they're going to a store. But that's just my personal opinion. And, I told you about morning sun. Kind of concerned about the drainage on my property, and sidewalks. There is a sidewalk right now between our properties, and a sidewalk in front of, um, the station, which I use constantly, my neighbors use. I realize the main sidewalk is on the other side of the street, and, um, I can't remember, at one of these meetings, someone kept saying, "It's a sidewalk to nowhere," but it's not, it's a sidewalk to my home. My neighbors use it, they walk across my lawn, and that's great. Um, I would really, uh, hope that you don't get rid of that sidewalk. I also keep it maintained in the winter. Um, I get the snow off of it, so that I can walk, um, to the, you know, 'cause I walk to church, so I go across the parking lot, and go to the side, um, crosswalk and cross the street. So, those are my big concerns, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear them.
So, if, can I just go back and ask a question about sidewalks? Um, I know early on in conceptual, we had some discussion about sidewalks on both sides of Mass Street, or Mass, South Mass Road, excuse me.
It's Mass Street.
And I can't remember what the final result of that discussion was, but I'm sure that the board will take that up and, and take it into consideration.
I think you wanted to go to DPW and discuss it with them, and also the safety, uh, maybe the police chief of safety, some sort of, you had mentioned those two things.
And I think probably it should become a part of a technical review, uh, reading. Now, is that, uh, technical review, is that a scheduled meeting when anybody can come, or is it just with the applicant and the town's staff?
Typically, it's just the applicant and staff.
Right. And, uh, just so noted that, uh, it should be a topic of discussion, if that's possible.
I have written them both letters, in my concerns with just doing away with a sidewalk like that, and the sidewalk in front of it. I think there might be some, they might be having something there, but that is heavily congested parking lot, and, and not to have a place where people can walk, would, you know, should be a concern, I would think.
I'd like to go back to the vegetative area that you talked about along your property, that exists there now. And, my question would be, most of that vegetative area, in terms of trees, exists on their property at the moment?
Yes, absolutely, it's on their property.
Okay. And that, um, and I'll ask the applicant this question, is it the intent of the proposal to remove all that vegetation during the course of that, uh, retaining wall?
Uh, unfortunately, the retaining wall dictates that most of that would have to come out, yes.
It'd have to, to construct the retaining walls, supposedly.
And, um, just a question to the board. In our master plan, did we ever talk about, uh, vegetative buffers and streetscape in the master plan?
Streetscapes.
Okay. Um, the applicant should probably read those chapters in the master plan, about what we had been looking for in the town center, and to see if you can adhere to some of those principles that are established there. 'Cause I don't see it now. That's my observation, as a member of this board. Um, any other questions that you'd like to-
I would just ask that you all come out and park in my driveway and walk the property line, before you make a decision. I would really, I think it's hard to just look at that plan and not know how close someone's house is to a property line. Uh, my mother is, her bedroom and living room is on that property line, and, uh, and it is a challenge to live with the noise now, but, um, I think, if we could do something better on that, on that property line, to make it better for the neighbors, it would be wonderful. I just don't think this is, uh, the answer.
Okay.
Especially with loading concerns.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other members of public wishing to speak in reference to this application? Yes, sir? Please come forward and identify yourself.
Um, my name's Nick Leclair, I live across the street with my wife Judy. Uh, what concerns me, again, is, we talked about, is, again, the snow removal, and relate this to one other thing. Uh, it piles up on the corner there, and you have your, uh, your gasoline trucks come in and deliver, and, and, you know, you're talking about snow there four, five months of the year. Okay? How often's it gonna be moved? Uh, at the meeting last week, uh, there was more than one person had a concern for people coming down Mountain Road and having to turn, that they can't see, and plus the truck also blocks, and, uh, the other concern with that, if, if there is a delivery there, and the snow, and that new little curb cut, if some guy's coming in with a thirty-foot motor home, how is he gonna get in there and get to a, a gas stall? Or, if he just wanted to go shopping, and that big tanker's there, or some other delivery truck, which, coming down here tonight at six-thirty, quarter-seven, there was a delivery truck there, delivering oil. Um, how's a thirty-foot motor home gonna get in there without his, his back end sticking out in the road? Again, this is all traffic-related. Uh, if you would sit there, again, on a Saturday morning, or a Sunday morning, and see how many, uh, trucks, pickups come in with trailers on the back, filling their ATVs and stuff, I'd like to know how, if they pull in and they pull into the first stall there, that they aren't blocking, the rest of anyone's coming behind them to go to another stall, uh, they're gonna be sticking out, and if, if, if the first guy does come in and go around up towards the building, takes a left, comes down through, again, his trailer's gonna be out there blocking that whole back area where everyone's gonna try, wanna get in and park. That's all I gotta say on that.
Okay, so, to, just to shorten that, so you're looking at, uh, consideration for maneuvering of vehicles of different types on the site, how it happens?
Well, more the safety of the people coming behind them, because it, there's not gonna be room for, you know, it's gonna back up out into the street.
Okay. Alright. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in reference to this application? Seeing none. Members of the board, um, it's your pleasure, in terms of this particular application. I know we're gonna see it again, um, do, based upon the discussion and, as presented by the applicant, and those questions proposed by the, um, speakers about the project, specifically Ms. Leclair, Mr. Leclair, and Teresa Golden, are there any questions, or advice, or questions that come to your mind, that we would like to have the applicant consider? This time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Well, based on the discussion of the vegetative buffer between the Golden property and the proposed site, there seems to be a lot of asphalt there that is, it's very wide there, to the left of the pump. Um, I wonder if there could be a consideration to decrease that asphalt area, and widen the area for the vegetative buffer where the proposed wall's gonna go, uh, or possibly not install all of that wall, maybe a portion of it in the back corner where it's really necessary. 'Cause that section of asphalt between the fuel dispenser and the sideline to the Golden property, it's a very wide area right there. Unless it's there for traffic turning, which we don't see right now, it should, it could be considered.
Would you suggest that as part of the TRC, that they have prepared a, some type of a, uh, traffic pattern, like we saw on a prior project at the Dollar Store, as to how things maneuver on the site?
Well, I'm sure they're gonna, I'm sure they're gonna have to show the, uh, motion, movement of the gasoline tanker, on and off the site, and the radius is required, as well as the, uh, tractor trailers that are gonna deliver products to the store.
And to, if we were to try to suggest to minimize the pavement, as you're discussing here, where parking space number one is over there, and number twenty-two E, are you suggesting that, uh, if they were to minimize that, we would be increasing possibly the consideration for waiver on parking?
Well, we might be able to start a little bit below parking spot number one, and just widen it on that very narrow section where the wall is right over to the property line, out to the street corner. We may not have to interfere with the parking as much as, as would be suggested.
Uh, Brian, question for you in terms of parking. Uh, they show twenty-three spaces, including the six at the traffic, uh, fueling islands. What's the required parking for this facility?
I believe that's shown on there.
It is?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
It's on the zoning table that you have in the front. E four? In the bottom right corner, right there.
So, did somebody answer the question without me looking around? How many parking spaces are required?
Twenty-six.
Okay. And we got twenty-three. So they're looking for a waiver on three parking spaces.
And what are the calcu- the parking spaces are calculated based on what?
Square footage of the building.
Oh, okay.
And the use type.
Okay.
Now, is that based upon the fact that it's retail, or do, is it counted in a, in a way or fashion where, if the thirty percent of the store is refrigeration, do they count that as retail? Or do they count it as storage space at some lesser density for parking?
We could get creative with that, I'm not sure what the calculations, how they would come out, if we change that.
There are plenty of ways to get creative with it.
Okay.
I think that's why they leave it open for the planning board to be able to waive parking requirements as well, so.
Okay. Tim?
I think-
Or Phil, which, either one. Tim?
I think the parking waiver is based on the fact that our, our sites in the village are all small, from the hardware store to the Cumberland Farms proposed site, to any other, and, a waiver is almost necessary for anybody to function in town. Otherwise, the building would have to be, well, the building could be reduced, I'm sure, to make more parking meet the requirements, but, um-
What a thought.
Well, I said it, so. And I, and I didn't know we included parking spaces at the gas islands. I, I wondered about that, because those are not actual parking spaces, that's part of the function of the gas island. I don't know how they qualify as parking spaces.
Part of the requirement for spaces for a convenience store is parking for the square footage of the building, plus number of stalls, and I think it's like one and a half stalls per pump, that you would have to, um, provide.
But we show parking spaces as being numbered next to the pumps.
Yeah, one space would be counted as part of the, at the pump, and the other spaces would be counted as either waiting space- be counted as either waiting space.
So it's okay for people to pull up and park at the pumps and not buy gas and go inside and use the store? Is that what you're saying?
I do that all the time.
People do that all the time, especially at that location.
Okay, I'm just curious if that's part of the calculated.
Oh, yeah. They do.
Just asking.
Okay. Now, if the technical review committee can, the discussion come about as to what we can do about, I'll call it, the allocation of green space and the reduction of parking spaces?
We can definitely have that discussion. I'm already.
Based upon the elimination of one and 22?
I don't know that we should be getting that specific. I think we've heard a bunch of concerns that TRC is going to have to take a look at. They're going to have to hash through it and we'll see what we get back.
All right. I personally think the retaining wall's too close to the property line.
Kind of why I brought it up.
And I'd be looking for some modification of that location of the retaining wall because it actually hooks around the back of the dumpsters and back into the building. It's not just along that property line. And quite possibly with some proper grading, they might not have to have a retaining wall but only a fence. So, that's my personal opinion. Members of the board, in terms of waivers, do we want to consider those this evening or do we want to take and have an opportunity to read all the additional information that we received this evening, if any, reference those waivers? Members of the board, yes?
I think we should hold off on the waivers until the TRC committee has reviewed it because part of this, part of their review is going to be about sidewalks, about driveways and the values that are placed on the driveways based on the, based on our regulations.
Okay.
Let Public Works work with the applicant to see if, see if they may want to eliminate some of those waivers and come back and not ask for a waiver.
Then.
I'll make a motion to continue this site plan public hearing for further consideration to September 8th.
I hear a second. Motioned by Barbara, seconded by Phil. Any discussion on the motion? Only that I think the applicant has heard sufficient information as to how the members of the board feel and how the members of the public feel about certain aspects of the project and I would expect that we did some further examples or maybe minor modifications to the site plan proposal in such time as it would be considered for our September 8th meeting. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, a call for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries unanimously and we'll see you in less than a month. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to state for the record that the zoning board of adjustments notice of decision was not a resounding 5-0-0 for the variances. Although we didn't discuss that tonight, it was a, was sort of a split decision nearly on the variance, though.
I understand that, but it's, as I said.
I understand what you said.
The variance was granted and the discussion is.
Done.
Done.
No, if I may comment, Mr. Chair, the discussion is not done. A variance is not planning. A variance allows the applicant to come here.
That is correct. I did not say that we couldn't modify the plan.
Right.
But the discussions about the variance and its approval process is done.
I understand.
Thank you very much.
That the discussion about the variance approval processes and the variance being approved are done. That does not mean that this board does not have the ability to make a decision that changes the variance granted.
Didn't say that.
Okay, but I just want to make that clear because that's what it sounds like. There's a difference.
That's not what it sounds like. I said we were not discussing what took place at the variance board.
Okay.
Thank you. Now, I've got to call a recess for 10 minutes. Stretch.
That's like a cool off.
Welcome back. Brian, you have the floor, but we're gonna move forward into old business. Map four, lot eighty-seven-six, public meeting slash hearing for time extension requests for the approved subdivision site plan application of Woodland Trust. Applicant implicit wood owner for proposal to subdivide the lot into two lots and build seventy-six townhouse style condominium units, totally thirteen buildings on lot eighty-seven-six. The property is located off of Bog Road and Mountain Road, Zoned Residential One. Just for everybody's clarification, I don't think there are seventy-six units here now, but that was the original application number.
That was the approval one, yeah.
Okay.
It wasn't the original application.
Okay. So this is the approved number of units. Brian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you stated, this is a time extension request. We got the application in, in a timely manner. The subdivision and site plan are due to expire September tenth, so they actually could've potentially made it even onto the next meeting. However, this is perfectly fine to act on it in this meeting and just approve the extension to that same date, a year from the September tenth date, when they are expiring. So what the applicant's reasoning for requesting this time extension is just that they have so far been unable to obtain financing for the project, and they are continually making efforts to do that. This is the second time extension request that's been put before the planning board. The first one was approved a year ago, September tenth. And so with that, my recommendation would be to find that the site plan does not have a, or that the extension proposal does not have a regional impact, to accept the extension proposal as complete and ready for review, to hear the applicant's presentation if they so wish to present, to hold the public hearing and resolve any remaining issues. And then staff's recommendation would be to extend the approval for one year, granting them extension to September tenth, two thousand and twelve, conditioned upon the existing approved conditions.
Two years.
From the original approval. I'll turn the time back to the chair.
Thank you, Brian. Members of the board, in consideration for this project, I'd like to look at item number one for recommend, under recommendations, and in terms of motion about, in reference to regional impact.
Okay, I move that we find this does not have regional impact.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Mark, a second by Phil. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the site plan extension proposal as complete and ready for review.
Motion by Tim. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mark. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Excuse me. Is it, I'm sorry if I'm out of order. I just, are you voting on things without public, is this a public hearing? Could you clarify that for me?
Yes, it is. These are clerical motions that we're going through at the moment. In terms of regional impact, we have not opened the public hearing as of yet.
Thank you.
Is there, the applicant's representative here wishing to speak to the board? Please step forward and identify yourself, please.
I'm Attorney Jim Coughlin, also trustee of Woodland Trust. A year went by pretty fast. There was some movement with banks and some investors in April and May, and I thought the economy was getting better. Unfortunately, with the situation with the government and other things, that everything just fell off the face of the earth after that. We are meeting with people. I plan to develop it. We believe it's a good project. This board and other boards, and myself, Amy Butters, went through a lot of work to get this project approved, and I think it's a good project to be built, and we are gonna build it. I said that last year, and I'm hoping to say it again before I see you again next year. Some of the banks that I met with, in fact, Brian referred one to me, was looking for a type of package of twenty-five percent land acquisition, fifty percent construction, infrastructure, and no financing for construction until the units were sold. It's not quite a program out of, you know, sixty or seventy projects I've done that can be successful. And I'm not gonna start a project that is not gonna make it, and so that's why I'm here for the extension. We did get the alteration of terrain permit extended for five years till February two thousand and sixteen, hopefully not using that. The wetland permit is still in effect, and the special exception is still good until February ten, two thousand and twelve. Yes. And if there's a matter that we have to file for an extension for that, we will do also. Usually, I'm sure you're all aware, that construction falls off after Thanksgiving and doesn't really pick up again until the spring. Glad to answer any questions to the board.
Are members of the board have any questions to the applicant? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing.
Tim raises his hand.
Excuse me.
Chairman?
Yes.
We have a project that has been granted, a CMAC grant for the Pleasant Street intersection for the Public Works Department to improve the Pleasant Street intersection, and it's in this year's Matrix Four, to begin work, I guess, because they wanna get going on it. Part of the total cost of that construction is your off-site fee that was negotiated as part of your agreement with the approval process. Now, it doesn't show your off-site fee kicking in until two thousand and thirteen on our The completion of that roundabout, if you will, they wanna build at Pleasant Street is dependent upon the balance of that funding coming from your project. Do you anticipate being able to make that two thousand and thirteen deadline to honor that obligation?
Well, two things. One is that I did talk to the Director of Public Works.
Carl Quorum.
Carl Quorum about it. He asked me what my, you know, what my situation was and what was happening. I explained it to him, and he said, "Well, if he gets some funds and he needs the money," he said, "He'll have to find it somewhere else, but he's still, but I'm still gonna have to pay it at the point where I start my construction." And that's, that's what we had talked about. And I said, "I understand that." Of course, it was contingent upon that.
So the Public Works Department has, is working on a deferred payment plan in the event that you're not ready by that deadline?
I don't know exactly if it's a deferred payment plan, but I discussed it with them, and they asked me if I was gonna contribute it now, and I said, "No."
Okay.
I'm intending to have that as part of my financing. Then he said that, "Well, I guess I'll have to find it somewhere else, but keep in mind, you're still gonna have to pay that in." And I said, "Of course." I knew that.
So that, you have, this is, this is on the radar for you?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the board have a question to the applicant? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public wishing to speak in reference to this application for an extension? Yes, ma'am. Please step forward and identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Prozcaza. I'm a director of order to the property in question and have been here many times in opposition to the density of this project. I'm concerned tonight about granting the time extension for this project because the developer has come numerous times to ask for extensions. This is the second time. It puts the Butters in a, in a position where we have to go back and look at the existing ordinances and regulations and to make sure that he's in compliance with all of those existing ordinances. And it's a burden on the, on the Butters mentally, physically, emotionally, financially. There have been some changes in the ordinances and the positions on some of the boards, particularly there's a sewer line issue that has, the Sewer Commission has changed its position in the interim of this approval, which may affect some of his state permitting that he, it's a substantial change, that his plan would, if this was allowed to be continued or an extension be granted, it would allow him to take advantage of a loophole and not comply with the current goal of the Sewer Commission. So number one, I'm very concerned about that. If this time extension is set to expire September tenth and this board is meeting in the interim, I might suggest that this board request the position of the Sewer Commission, clarification to see how much of an imposition that new position might make or what kind of an impact it might have on this, this development. Also, I'm concerned about, there may be some, some possibility that this is the parcel that has been advertised for sale in the Goffstown News for the past few weeks, and if this developer is represented today, that he intends to develop this land and yet he's trying to sell it, I'm concerned about his representation to this board. And, and I think that you need to take that into consideration. I would, I would ask for you to, to deny the extension, and if you're not of the mind to deny it outright, perhaps consider meeting again on September tenth so that he may have the opportunity to address the Sewer Commission's position. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any documentation references, new position of the Sewer Commission?
I do not, but I, it's on public record on the Sewer Commission minutes, and, and if there's no pressing deadline before the September tenth, that can be, it may not be an issue to the Sewer Commission. It may very well be an issue. I'm not on the Sewer Commission. I don't know the details of it. But part of the, of the approval was a sewer line that went through to service Hermsdorf, and that has changed in the Sewer Commission's priorities. And I'm sorry, I don't know more details about it, but it's not insignificant to the approval process in the beginning.
I'm gonna defer to Tim here. Tim?
Mr. Chairman, I want to ask Brian a question. Brian, do we notify these agencies so that if the Sewer Department had a concern that they could be present to make public comment at this time? Or is it not that type of a notification? Or is this all new information to you right now? This possible overriding of the Sewer Commission's regulations?
No, that's new information that I have not heard before.
Okay.
As far as notifying the Sewer Commission of public meetings, it's basically the same notice that anyone else would get, that, you know, the notices are published prior to the meeting, and they have access to, you know, look at the agenda and see what's on there, but we wouldn't directly send them a notice in the mail, per se.
And in fairness to the applicant, I don't know that we can penalize the applicant because the Sewer Commission has changed their plan, if you will, after someone has already done things and paid to have things done, and to say, "Well, they just don't wanna unfairly burden the applicant at this point." It's gotta be a fair strike between the Sewer Commission and the applicant.
I have a question. Yes.
I don't recall the conditions in regards to the sewer. I do recall it being an issue a couple of applications ago, and I, and I think I actually walked to this property at one point in some capacity with this application, even though I wasn't on the planning board at the time it was, it finally came through. What, let me ask Kathy, what, what are you talking, I'm trying to remember what this was as part of this plan approval?
There was a secondary line that this, the master plan for the Sewer Commission required that there would be another sewer line brought cross-country through the site. And when the original master plan that the Sewer Commission used was generated, it went through the primary wetland at the base, the northern part of the site.
Right, okay.
Through the development process, that was deemed an unfavorable location, and that line, as part of the town of Goffstown's master plan for their sewer line, got moved to the upland side of the hill. And because, the upland side of the site, because the sewer line master plan required connection to the western side of the, of the town, there needed to be an easement put in place and a line put in place. And that was, that was a condition that the developer was going to pay for. Now, that was under his parking lots, and there was a future pump station, and that was part of the agreement that, that he would have to pay for. What the change is, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if they changed the location or the requirement or what, but it is part of, their alteration of terrain is putting in this sewer line to service other parcels to the west of this parcel.
All right. And then just a follow-up question that either Brian or Kathy, I'm sure can, or both can answer, and I apologize to the board and public for not asking this question before we began. Have there been any changes in the ordinances that would affect the current approval of this plan?
Not in the zoning ordinance since the, since the last time extension was made. The only change in the zoning ordinance was regarding the chickens and livestock.
What about the development regs?
The development regs have not been amended since the last time extension either.
Tim?
Mr. Chairman, I believe the line you might be speaking of, Kathy, was a forced main line. It was gonna run along the edge of the driveway on the Bog Road end, and it was going to be available for use to pump sewer through the project to the gravity manhole, and I believe that was part of the, I believe that was part of the final approval, and that line was going to be put in as part of that project. Now, I don't know how that goes against the Sewer Commission's master plan.
I don't either. And, and that's why I prefer to not speak about it, because I don't know the details of it, and I think it would be appropriate to speak with the Sewer Commissioners and have a letter saying that it's an issue or it's not an issue. And if their deadline isn't until September thirteenth, I think you have enough of a window of time to check and see if it's an issue or it's not an issue. And I think that's due diligence to find out whether it is.
I wanted to refresh my memory as to what you were talking about.
Certainly.
It is a point of observation. The Sewer Commission signed off on the original plans and knew the location of all the improvements on those plans. And it would be incumbent upon the Sewer Commission if they decide they wanna modify the location of pump stations or lines to notify the applicant of which they hold the right to this project and not vice versa. And it would be my opinion that it's up to the Sewer Commission to notify the applicant and not the applicant to police the Sewer Commission. So you are inferring that they have a new position without substantiation, and I would be therefore inclined to approve some extension with a notification to the Sewer Department that we are aware of or made aware of a potential reconsideration of location of equipment and that they would be required to coordinate with the applicant, period. So that's my comment. Any other board members have something to say? Thank you, Kathy. Do you have anything else?
I was, just wanted a little bit of clarification, perhaps, about the CIP and the one hundred and fifty thousand budget, and I had a question that it's in this year's CIP as kicking in in two thousand and thirteen, and I wondered if Mr. Redmond might be able to clarify. In previous years, was that in year two thousand and eleven and twelve? And, and by having this time lapse, what does that do to the CIP's ability, Commission's ability to plan? And is it in their best interest to grant this extension or to require him to pay that amount of money to be a placeholder, an actual placeholder?
This is in the offsetting revenue section of our matrix, so it is an anticipated income for a project. The Public Works Director is obviously in touch with the developer here by the developer's comments, and even if the town had to front the money to complete the project, the developer is still responsible to pay the town back when the project moves forward. Whether it's this developer or if this project gets sold to someone else down the road, that person who buys it buys the responsibility to pay that one hundred and fifty thousand dollar offsite improvements.
So that, that runs with the lands, not with the owner?
It goes, it's part of the, it's part of the approval, and it's, it's a condition of the approval, not specifically related to this gentleman or, or Mark Warden, if Mark buys the project next month from him. It goes to when it, when it, when it's finally time to develop the parcel. That's the person who's gonna be ultimately responsible. And these numbers, and it shows in two thousand and thirteen, and I would assume this is Public Works.
That's a fluid spot. That could be anywhere in the matrix. It's based on when the project moves forward.
And all projects continue to slide out as the matrices are, it may have showed in two thousand and twelve last year, but as two thousand and thirteen is generated, everything gets bumped out one year. I understand.
I understand. So just in closing, I'd like to thank the board for listening and also to, to say that this is why we have a, a set deadline at the end of an approval process that can be extended once and maybe secondarily or tertiaally as required by conditions. But the town also reserves the right to amend their, their documents and their ordinances to also evolve with the planning mode of, that the town sees fit. So to encumber this piece of land for development of seventy-six units may or may not be a wise thing to keep continuing to approve this and extend it, and I hope that the board would take that into consideration, that, that, that is why, that there's a sunset clause essentially, and I'd encourage you to, to let the sun go down on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant, yes?
I did call the Sewer Commission and the Water Precinct before I made the application. Last year, they did give me a, a letter. Ellen said that there was no require, no need for me to go back to the board or to extend anything. Everything was in place. And same with Lee Minnick. He also said the same thing. He said that he would extend the approval the same length of time that the planning board did. I can get letters for that, but I don't see any need to.
Okay. Thank you.
The zoning board of adjustment, if I asked them for an extension, I would get those letters because part of their conditions under a special exception is municipal water and sewer.
Okay. Thank you. Members of the board have any questions before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, have there anybody in the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Members of the board?
I'll make a motion to grant the extension for one year till September tenth.
I have a motion by Phil. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mark. Any discussion on that motion?
And is it in their best interest to grant this extension or to require him to pay that amount of money to be a placeholder, an actual placeholder?
This is in the offsetting revenue section of our matrix. So it is an anticipated income for a project. The Public Works Director is obviously in touch with the developer here by the developer's comments. And even if the town had to front the money to complete the project, the developer is still responsible to pay the town back when the project moves forward. Whether it's this developer or if this project gets sold to someone else down the road, that person who buys it buys the responsibility to pay that $150,000 off-site improvements.
So that runs with the lands, not with the owner?
It goes, it's part of the approval. And it's a condition of the approval, not specifically related to this gentleman or Mark Warden, if Mark buys the project next month from him. It goes to when it's finally time to develop the parcel. That's the person who's going to be ultimately responsible. And these numbers, and it shows in 2013, and I would assume this is Public Works.
That's a fluid spot. That could be anywhere in the matrix. It's based on when the project moves forward.
And all projects continue to slide out as the matrices are, it may have showed in 2012, last year, but as 2013 is generated, everything gets bumped out one year.
I understand. So just in closing, I'd like to thank the board for listening and also to say that this is why we have a set deadline at the end of an approval process that can be extended once and maybe secondarily or tertiaally as required by conditions. But the town also reserves the right to amend their documents and their ordinances to also evolve with the planning mode that the town sees fit. So to encumber this piece of land for a development of 76 units may or may not be a wise thing to keep continuing to approve this and extend it. And I hope that the board would take that into consideration, that is why that there's a sunset clause essentially. And I'd encourage you to let the sun go down on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant, yes?
I did call the sewer commission and the water precinct before I made the application. Last year, they did give me a letter. Ellen said that there was no require, no need for me to go back to the board or to extend anything. Everything was in place. And same with Lee Minnick. He also said the same thing. He said that he would extend the approval the same length of time that the planning board did. I can get letters for that, but I don't see any need to.
Okay. Thank you.
The zoning board of adjustment, if I asked them for an extension, I would get those letters because part of their conditions under a special exception is municipal water and sewer.
Thank you. Members of the board have any questions before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, have there anybody in the public portion to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Members of the board.
I'll make a motion to grant the extension for one year to September 12.
I have a motion by Phil. Is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by Mark. Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Phil to amend his motion to include the approval is contingent upon the ZBA granting the extension of February 2nd, 2012.
Well, I think that that-
No. Well, that can be discussed, but he'd have to amend his motion.
That's what I just asked him to do, to include that, because I think that's an important part of the motion. Granting the extension would be conditioned on the ZBA granting the extension.
I don't see that as really being relevant because we can only grant what we statutorily approve. We cannot approve that portion of his approval.
Well, the only reason I say that, Phil, is because when we had the Christian Harvest Church in here with the non-viable variance and us denying a plan, it became a big deal. I was trying to avoid confusion in the future by conditioning your extension based on the knowledge and it being upfront. Because when they came in for their site plan extension, there was no mention of the variance being, needing to be extended as well. And that was a statement made by the applicant at the time, way back then.
I didn't think of it in that regard because of the fact it came up in the discussion here and that the applicant said that that was a good point and that he understood that. So I would assume that that would have been part of the record, but-
It's not a record unless you state it.
No, I mean, a part of the record of this meeting.
Okay.
As far as a mo, then that's fine. I mean-
As a member of this board, I don't consider adding that as a part of the condition as necessary.
Why did we go through the whole thing with the Harvest Christian Church, then?
That's exactly what-
We didn't get a plan here until the special exception was approved.
And then when we denied, we became part of the lawsuit.
No, 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 I'm talking about this. We don't have a plan to approve without a ZB action first. So when we take our action to approve a plan, it's because there are existing approvals for either special exceptions or variances to our regulations so we don't have to waive conditions or grant other things under different circumstances. So I think Tim's point is, and I'm not sure that the applicant would have any problem with this, is that the extension of approval for one year is subject to the conditions we placed on it, but is also contingent on maintaining a current ZBA approval of the special exception. That's what this plan needs to be a viable plan. So I understand that members are saying, we don't need to do it. We didn't do it, this board didn't do it at the original motion because it was in place.
But my comment would be that those two approvals are never in sync, ever, when it requires a variance. They usually occur before planning boards, so the dates never are in sync.
And I would have to say to that, then, if you take your point, then we can only grant the approval until his special exception expires.
That's right.
That's all we can, we can't go to the September 10th of next year.
Because it-
Well, yeah, in my, as long as he gets an extension before it expires, our approval would remain in place.
But that would require the applicant to come back for another meeting.
Only if you only grant it to February. If you grant it for the year.
But I think you're making my point.
Okay.
We can only approve what we statutorily approve.
I understand the problem with including it.
Mr. Phil, do you want to amend your motion?
Well, if it's going to get the votes to pass, I'll amend it.
No, I didn't say that.
You know, I don't want to-
I didn't ask that question. I asked the question, step up to the plate, make a decision.
Already did.
Okay. Motion stands. End of discussion. All those in favor say aye. Excuse me.
Can I just make sure we all understand what the motion was again? Can you maybe restate it?
It was to extend the approval for one year from 9/10/11 to 9/10/2012. And the approval is still subject to all conditions as originally approved.
And it did or did not include?
It does not.
Does not include.
It does not.
Does not. It was seconded by Mark. So to move that motion forward, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our-
The EC thing.
The patient engineer in the audience.
She gets paid by the hour.
Under all business, map three lot 41 and 61-2, site plan review hearing for a proposal to remove an existing parking lot and plant a grass common located at St. Anselm's College on St. Anselm's Drive, Zone Residential 2, and continued from July 28, 2011. So the public hearing is still open. Is a representative of the applicant here to present to the board? Thank you. We'll pass him this way. Thank you.
I'm Jeff Cavani, Mattia Moran's office, representing St. Anselm's College. This is an overall picture of the campus, just so that you can situate yourself. St. Anselm's Drive running along here, the bulk of the campus in this location. Just a year or plus ago, there was a subdivision where the abbey and the church were subdivided off. It was an issue of college and church being separated as far as property. What's being proposed is to take the lower campus parking lot. So normally, you come into the campus, come around, and you come down this hill. It's a fairly steep driveway. There's a large parking lot that's been there a long time. I forget when they said it was originally constructed, but it's been a long time. Dana Center and Davidson is in that location. They're proposing, and they've had this on their master plan for a while, to remove the parking lot, create a quad area that improves pedestrian circulation and what have you down in an area. And they're relocating the parking lot and construct it over in this location on the, this is the Bedford Town Line. Over in the area was the Clark Farm a while back. This is the ICE Arena. So again, what you have right now, parking lot currently runs from this edge to here. This is all solid pavement right now. They're also, one of the things they're doing with this is they've added an elevator in the, at this end of the Gad Boys Science Building. So what they're trying to do is achieve ADA access from lower campus to upper campus. So you'll be able to come across the quad, come in this door, get in the elevator, come in, and actually come in on the upper level to the upper campus. Right now, you would come down this sidewalk, and this is easily eight, nine percent coming down that driveway right now. So proposal is to remove about an acre and a half plus of pavement. What we've done is created large sidewalks that happened discussing with the fire chief. Basically, these two would be 16-foot sidewalks. We'd have a gate here, a gate here, a gate here, and a gate here. The way the gates would be set up would be, they'd be wrought iron gates similar to what St. A's has everywhere else on campus. There'd be another pillar about five feet away so pedestrians could walk in around and maintain pedestrian access. Gates would be closed under normal circumstances. If emergency access or maintenance vehicles need to get through, open the gates. One of the reasons for this also is you have a dormitory here and a dormitory here. Obviously, the kids, students have to move in and out, at which time you could open the gate, stack the cars, unload the students, and they will come through. This is the parking lot across from the ICE Arena right now. We're proposing to bring them through, create another driveway here, and you'd have a three-way stop in that location. This is Runlet Hill Road that goes into Bedford. It is gated here and gated at the opposite end. Fire Department in Bedford has asked that there be remote control movable gates so that they don't have to get out of their truck if they're coming in and have to get out of the truck twice. So St. A's has agreed to do that. What we're doing is, as you come up right now, you come in the loop road off of St. Anselm's Drive, and come around the backside of the ICE Arena or past the football field and around. Right now, the traffic flow pattern is one way in this direction. We're going to reverse it so it's one way in this direction. You come in again, gate here. This would remain open so that there are seven spots here with two handicap parking spaces so that if you have a need for ADA parking or accessible parking for the two dorms, there are two spaces. In this location, there are some ADA spaces or accessible spaces here in front of the ICE Arena and Davidson. At the opposite end, again, we're leaving this parking lot. The gate would be here and here, leaving these parking spaces, these 12, open. After some discussion with the board and staff, what we've done is we've positioned two ADA spaces at this end of the parking lot and two at this end, adding a few. In addition to it, just so the board's aware, there are accessible spaces here in which those people can come in the end of the Dana Center right there. So there is a fair amount of accessible parking in the locations. And then the main lot is being constructed right here, just over the town line next, just beside the ICE Arena. Access will remain through Goffstown. So, and the reasons, there was some discussion as to whether we should access on to what was formerly Runlet Hill Road, the gated part. Again, what's nice about this is this area is cones off. You can't get any cars back there, and there isn't a big tall fence next to the athletic fields that they have there. And one of the reasons St. A's didn't want to change that pattern is if they opened this up, they'd have the fence off those fields or else they'd be worried about kids driving out onto the grass and what have you. Plus, we didn't, they also liked the idea of the circulation and control the access in and out of the campus the way it is right now. So basically, we're taking the 300 spaces from here, constructing them over there. In general, we have about a 10-space increase overall campus. We have about 1,972 spaces when we're finished on campus. We've been providing an overall campus parking plan with our projects for a while now, I think since the football field went in, just so everybody knew the overall. There's 46 accessible parking spaces overall campus. I think we need more in the range of 26 or 30, but just in spacing them around the campus, they have an excess. Other than that, lighting plan has been provided. They're using the decorative style light that they have on campus. It's a 12-foot high pole, relatively low profile. They will have cameras and the call, you know, the emergency call box out on the site as well within the new parking lot. And I guess the only other feature I'll mention is they are proposing a grotto. There's a large ledge outcrop here that they're proposing a meditation spot where they will take the walkways up in there, create some benches and an actual prayer in that area and utilize that ledge outcrop. Other than that, there's a landscaping plan in there. The general idea is what's shown on this plan is basically lining it with trees. We preserve, there's some crabapple trees here right now on the island, so we're preserving those and utilizing crabapples down that corridor. There's some pin oaks, some substantial existing pin oaks. There's one here and three down in this location that we're looking at maintaining and preserving those in place. They're nice big trees. The area in front of the Davidson and Dana Center, we're going to reconstruct those walks, and they're actually going to remove the vegetation that's in that area and replant it just to upgrade it. Other than that, I was surprised when I got into the project, the great difference from this building here, because I always looked at it, it's a flat parking lot, you know? But this building actually sits up rather high, so as you look at it, we have an accessible ramp that comes down and a few set of stairs or a few steps, I think there were six there, that come down. And it's about a 4% grade in general across this area, and it's much flatter down here. I think 2% grades. But we'd be regrading the whole thing, re-looming and seeding and replanting. So I'll turn it back to you if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Members of the board have had questions, starting with Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, I heard what you said about the college liking the traffic flow on and off the campus, even with the relocated lot. But was there ever any consideration given to requesting an entrance into the town of Bedford's road system to alleviate the massive congestion that happens when an event ends at the college and everybody has to get out the one driveway that goes out to St. Anselm Drive? Because we've all driven in that at one time or another.
This is kind of more historic situation, you know, with, this is, this, I can't tell you the exact date. I've been working on campus for probably approaching 20 years. And this was gated before then at both sides. This being much more dense residential type road, this is much wider and cleaner out to 114 in this direction. So I guess the answer is no. I know they, in the past few years, they had, nobody's gone back, but it was always extremely clear from Bedford's standpoint that that was closed.
So there never any, because I do know that Runlet Hill is a direct access to Boynton Street and Boynton Street, not Boynton Street.
Rockland.
Barney.
No, the-
No, it goes down to Donald Street.
Donald Street, that's the word I'm trying to think of.
And that's all been rebuilt. That's all been rebuilt from the intersection up by the Clark Farm.
So you would have, you'd have an extremely easy exit from the college parking by way of Runlet Hill and Donald Street to 114 and access to the highway. It would be, I know the neighbors live over there, and I know they're probably would have voiced concerns, but was it ever considered as a temporary use for event?
It was at one time, but like I said, it hasn't been brought up when the football field went through, Bedford was closed to that being opened up in any fashion. You know, the road is open and closed subject to gates and, subject to the gates. So-
So when Bedford, when Bedford approved the parking lot, which I believe they have?
Yeah.
We didn't get notified about a regional impact, did we?
No, we didn't.
Because Bedford notifies us on regional impacts when they're down to their last meeting, as they did with the market basket. It was the final night of the approval, and we got a notice for regional impact, requesting our comments. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Phil?
You may have mentioned this, and I may not have heard it. What is the surface that they're proposing? Is this going to match the brick-type surface they have in the other?
Now, at this point, we're proposing asphalt. I'm sure they will upgrade some of the areas, but until they have a cost associated with it, they, I've been instructed to keep it as asphalt. This will be an expensive project.
Oh, I know.
I get it.
I know, being part of the master plan.
I'm sure, I'm sure that they will probably upgrade that surface, but it'll cover portions of it. You know, I would anticipate, you know, this center, and the question is, is which of these? But I would imagine most of this will be asphalt. But I would imagine most of this will be asphalt. Thank you.
Can I get a question?
Yes, Barbara.
Can I get, there's a, there's a number of sort of conditions on the approval recommendation that relates to GPW. Do we have a response to any of those?
I haven't got that far yet, but I was going to ask Megan if she could comment on the TRC review, the drainage questions that came up at the earlier presentation.
All right, so...
Those kind of issues, I was going to ask, yes.
All right, so when you asked Megan to address those, because my recollection is we sort of came down this path because of the drainage issues. And when I'm looking at the comments we got after we made an effort to take into account everybody else's drainage issue, it doesn't look like we got many comments from anybody on the actual drainage. So, you know, I, I guess I just want verification from Megan that the drainage got looked at, it looked like it did and...
You want to make a catch base on that a little bit as well?
Please, Jeff.
What we did is we did a, we broadened this. I mean, a simple approach would have been, I'm taking up an acre and a half of pavement and putting down an acre and a half of grass. I got a reduction in drainage is a real simple approach. Okay. As we got into it, obviously Megan and the town wanted to broaden that, so what we've done is we've done a full drainage analysis of not just the campus, but specifically some culverts that are acting up down in Rockland Ave. And when I say acting up, there's a 54-inch pipe that leaves Rockland Ave, which doesn't have any problems, it has adequate capacity and so forth. There's a 36-inch pipe that comes off of a private piece of property, which is undersized. And there's a 30, 24 or 30-inch pipe under that driveway that is undersized. And what it receives, it receives all this runoff and it takes in runoff from over where the new parking lot is going, which comes in and wraps around and works its way back to that very spot.
Right.
So what we've done is analyzed it and the gist of it is, is that this obviously is a reduction in drainage. We reduce our runoff someplace 15 to 20 CFs going to our detention pond, which is down by Benedict Court, which helps that detention pond function a lot better than it functions today. That original analysis, I actually did by hand when I originally did it way back. So we went into a lot more detail. The numbers came out where we didn't have as much freeboard as when we originally did this study, but at this point, it brings it back to where the 50-year storm has a foot of freeboard in that detention pond and it's a lot better, reduces the flow to the culvert here significantly. What we've done is we've put in two wet ponds over here to provide stormwater treatment and detention and so forth in this location. We also took the runoff that these fields in Bedford actually were flowing down across this way and got into the system down by the football field. We redirected those back and put those into my new ponds, which provided better capacity around, in the system around the football field and again, less water coming through my system down to that pond, which helped, also helped that. And we analyzed this and the whole system that revolved around and came down here. And again, it was a reduction between that 10 and 15 CFs depending on which storm you were looking at. The comments that Megan has in here are, I mean, the top four are kind of standard conditions, providing AutoCAD.
Right.
File stamps and so forth. Five, six, seven are some, basically me cleaning up some things on my plans. Eight is a verification on this first lock wall that's out there. Nine and 10, I'm not sure, we're glad to take care of them, but I don't know if it's something you should put on there because it's pertaining to my plan in Bedford. But again, we have no problem with taking care of those two items, but I don't know if they're appropriate for you to put on your plan.
Are those ponds that flowed, flow into the tra, into the drainage system in Goffstown?
Yes, they do.
I think that's what you said, right?
Well, they flow, they ultimately get there.
Good.
So, like I said, I have no problem with taking care of them. I don't know that, she's, you know, you have jurisdiction over looking at those plans at Bedford, but I have no problem with addressing those two items. And then the final item, again, is a duplication saying we'll provide AutoCAD. We've provided AutoCAD files to Megan in the past. It's just, when, when do we give them to you, where they're updated enough? And so at this point, we have, this, this project is finalized. There was a substation where they've upgraded their electric source over behind the practice football field. That's all set and this, once this project's in, we'll provide the disc. And that disc, probably more than Megan normally sees, especially for a property this size, it has everything we know about sewer, water, drainage, gas, the property itself and any buildings that we've been able to bring in. So it's a fairly comprehensive plan for the campus.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. Do you have anything to add to that, Megan?
I don't think so, no. I think he covered anything unless you guys have specific questions.
No.
I mean, he went over all the points that I had written down.
Yeah. I have just a professional question, is how's the coordination been with Bedford on the things they did on their side of the fence, so to speak?
I haven't spoken to Bedford. I reviewed, I requested the plans for the pond, for the parking lot and ponds in Bedford, which TF Moran provided me. I reviewed them because it was part of the drainage study I was reviewing.
Yeah, okay.
So for me, I needed to see the plans, the drainage study, it's all one thing to me. So, you know, I thought the same thing. I didn't know if I had the right to have comments on the plans, but to me, it is all related, you know, it all flows into Goffstown. So I sent them to Brian, but I wasn't really sure, you know, how that was...
They probably shouldn't be there.
And I didn't go through Bedford, you know, I could have called Bedford, I guess, or asked Brian too, but I figured we'd deal with it here and then see what happens. I guess I'm kind of curious what the status is of the review in Bedford, that's done and approved in Bedford.
Yes, that's what Jeff's basically said, is that, I don't know, I would certainly, Brian, from my point of view, make the phone call to the planner over there and at least ask him to be more, provide you information on things that you...
The reality is, there's no requirement to, there's no guidelines or requirement to notify other towns in regards to regional impact. It's completely discretionary.
Absolutely.
And even if anybody supplies a comment, it's completely discretionary as to whether or not it's even considered. So, you know, and the history with our adjoining towns, as many towns in New Hampshire is, they don't, they, they're dealing with what's within their boundaries.
Okay, fine.
Great, it is common. I mean, we did supply, I supplied all three towns with everything that was going on. I think I met with you very early on, on all the process, trying to make sure all the loops were closed.
Okay.
In that, you know, as far as regional impact, I think it's interesting that you decided that it was of regional impact because from my vantage point, parking, parking still enters and leaves at the same place. The amount of traffic is the same. You know, we're talking about, you know, it's the parking lot there, it's the parking lot here. I know there was a town line involved, but as far as how this campus functions, you know, there's very little effect, other than the drainage, which, you know, the campus does affect both towns with all the utilities that are occurring out there.
And I don't disagree with that statement, to be quite honest with you, but it's just a question of, we keep getting hammered with the regional impact around, seems to be the proverbial question, even in the center of town. But, thank you.
But I did make sure that not just...
That's good enough for me.
Not just Bedford and Goffstown, but we also supply plants to Manchester Planning Board and Dave Winslow attended two meetings with us pertaining to that dry, drainage issue.
Explanation is good enough for me.
And it appears they ultimately had no comment, essentially, right?
They were satisfied with the drainage study because there was a reduction. Everyone's aware that there's still a problem at those culverts, but because they had made an effort to reduce the flow, Manchester was satisfied with that.
Right.
And we also have, you also have a letter in your packets from Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission stating a very similar statement to what Megan just said about...
Saint A's did offer, Saint A's did offer that if the city decided they would like to put in a, right now, this, this drainage comes through Saint A's property and then comes back on a piece that they, comes off of a piece they purchased into this private property and this driveway. And so Saint A's said if they would like an easement, which would be down on this corner, to put in a bypass pipe to equalize that, they would be glad to give them that easement. And I think Dave's comment was that they don't have any money with the reduction runoff, they could live with the problem.
Phil, did you have any comments or questions?
No. No, I'm all set.
Mark?
No, thank you.
The public hearing is still open, so I'm going to ask the proverbial question. Anybody in the public wishing to speak in reference to this application? Seeing none, I'll, well, I'll let Tim speak before I close the public hearing.
I just wanted to ask, Jeff, based on your, your improved reduction in the cubic feet per minute of the water runoff, do you feel that the college is in a good spot for a while?
Yeah, I do. I mean, if you're looking at, I mean, I don't know if you remember the overall kind of master plan that they have. One, keep in mind, Saint Anselm College has been around 2,000 students for, probably since I've been working with them. When I say 2,000, they could be up 20 students one way or down a few below that. But in general, they're around that area and they're not looking to change that size. They like, they like where they're at. You know, a couple, you look at this, you see a lot of green, but, you know, if you look at it, my detention pond is down here and this is all wet. You know, this is a relatively good slope here that's all forested. This area is an area that has meandering wetlands through it and they've identified that as something long-term they will preserve as open space, you know, in general. There's been discussion that, you know, would they take this, this road and ever make a connection through there so that the traffic circulation was there and then everything inside was pedestrian? You know, so that's possible, but that main area will always, I see it as always remaining green. This is what they call the meadow and it is the, a nice flat, beautiful piece of property where if somebody asks me where would I go with dormitories, that's ready for it. But that is an area that they feel is to be preserved because of its wildlife and other feature value to them. So, I mean, their growth, I don't see, we previously got a dormitory approved down in this area.
Yep, I remember that.
But these lawns in the front, you know, that's kind of a signature, you know, picture of the campus. So I think from a drainage perspective, they're in very good shape. You know, I could see them coming out into the landing lot here.
The Clark Farm.
Yeah. And, you know, would they ever, you know, put another academic building, but it would have very minor impact overall. And like I said, we've improved the capacity of that pond significantly and we've started a fairly good system down there that has helped, you know, address a bunch of little items.
Just very quickly, the basis for my question was, because even though your student population is not increasing, your impervious surfaces have increased with the addition of a lot of the new buildings, the ICE Arena, the new football field is a synthetic surface, it's not grass anymore. There's a lot of, there's a lot of changes to the dynamics of the drainage on the campus.
Yeah, and that's kind of why we stepped back and looked at the whole picture over again, even though we have, every time we've done something, we've done an analysis of that.
Right.
It's much more detailed or comprehensive this time and because of the way the, the analysis has improved over the years. But, yeah, I think it's, they're in pretty good shape as far as that goes.
Thank you, Jeff.
The synthetic turf field really shouldn't have any impact on drains, right? There were under drains in that field before, so they might even get a little bit of additional stored within the amount of stones in a synthetic turf field than compared to the natural...
We discussed that with Paul Carridio, I believe, at a previous meeting.
That's correct.
And we talked all about that, so we're good with that.
We're comfortable with that. All right. Yeah, I'm going to ask any members of the public. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Members of the board.
My question would be for Meg. Are you, are you content that the conditions that are listed in one through 11 are all easily attainable by the applicant to satisfy your requires and need? Do you have any, do you have any large outstanding issues?
No, I mean, probably the biggest one is getting that gravel access to the ponds.
Doesn't seem like a big deal.
Probably the, I mean, connecting pipes, I'm hoping that isn't too difficult, those, you know, some missing information.
No, that's...
I'm hoping maybe some layers were cut off or something.
Right, I don't know. You're looking for access down to the structural maintenance site, whether it's 10 feet or some other width, as long as I can get down.
Some type of access, so we'll clean that out with the back on truck and everything.
Yeah.
Well, based on the comments from the Public Works Department, if no other members have any comments, I'd be willing to make a motion.
I'm going to go around the room and ask one last time. Phil?
I'm all set.
Mark?
My only question is on what this gentleman mentioned about number nine, maybe it was 10 also, that refers to Bedford and if they're really required to be on here, if they're appropriate to be on here.
I think he's indicated that the documents for, for the town of Bedford have been supplied to the town, to Goffstown, and that we have a recorded copy of those approved plans or will have.
The plans I have, are they the final approved forms or...
No, they haven't been signed.
Then, then I would suggest that maybe that we at least get a filed copy of final approved plans for Bedford as a, just a matter of record of all what's going on, Jeff. Secondly, in terms of the number of items here, we don't customarily do that, but the applicant should know that if they can't resolve any one of these issues, they got to come back here.
Sure.
Before the plan's signed. That's it.
Subsequent or subsequent.
So I don't see anything on here and it's, and both the applicant and the town engineer have suggested that all of these can be addressed efficiently and expeditiously as they so desire.
I have a question.
Yes.
I don't think nine should be on our approval. That's not even, we don't have any jurisdiction for that, but I, so I have a question on this gravel access road.
Mm-hmm.
Where, where are we talking about that?
This is for the new parking lot in Bedford and I guess, I would look at this way. The reason I, we always ask for a maintenance road out to the ponds for access. And my argument for how it relates to Goffstown is that if you cannot have proper access to maintain the ponds and the ponds, let's say, over the years are not functioning properly, then that will affect the drainage that comes into Goffstown.
All right, well, I mean, I, I think I've heard the applicants say they don't have an issue with those, so I'm going to, you know, I'll vote for it, but...
And, and my thought is that if the town of Bedford didn't request access for maintenance of the ponds, I don't know why we should be asking for it.
Well, because, because the water, the water's not going to run into Bedford.
Drainage goes to us. Bedford doesn't care. There's no traffic. The drainage doesn't go to them.
If the drainage was going to run into Bedford, it'd be a different subject, but we are going to receive the water, so I think we have an absolute right to ask for conditions that make it so it can work properly and function into our, our town.
But do you want to make this applicant, they have to go back to the town of Bedford to get a subsequent approval for two gravel roads to ponds?
Well, they may not be material changes. Maybe they'd be administrative decisions.
Yeah, I don't think I'll have to go back to the board for, basically, I'd be providing a flat, a reasonable graded area to get the way of learning for.
Yeah, they're not big deals as far as...
I don't have a problem with removing number 10.
And I'll add also that the language is... And I'll add also that the language is recommend.
Okay.
So I don't know that they really have any kind of standing as far as full, you know, strong conditions.
Right, it's a recommendation. It's not include, verify. It's different. Okay. Yeah, I'm fine.
If it's a recommendation, it's not a condition of approval then.
I don't, that's fine.
Yes, Phil?
Brings up, brings up a question. And I don't know if it's been mentioned tonight. Those ponds that number 10 refer to, they're ponds that are in Bedford, am I correct?
Yes.
They're ponds that drain into Goffstown?
Yes.
Ultimately.
Ultimately into, not directly, but indirectly, they go across somebody else's property, I believe.
Well, I, I guess what number 10 is asking for is an access to reach the outlet structures and pipe for maintenance. If those get blocked up, those, that outlet and structures and pipe get blocked up, who's responsible for cleaning?
Saint Anne's of College.
Saint Anne's of College. Not a town drainage system. It's privately owned by them.
And are we asking for access to our town trucks?
Yeah, they're just asking that-
It's a suggestion.
We've created an easy way for the college to get to the outlet that would help encourage them to do annual maintenance.
Because ultimately it ends up in one of our culverts.
Ultimately ends up in Manchester.
Well, I was going to say, I think, I think that does end up in Manchester, actually.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like it's a constructive comment by the Public Works Department for Saint Anselm's benefit, not for us to try to tell them what to do, but it's, it's a recommendation based on our experience that if they were to construct this gravel road, it would aid in their maintenance of their own system.
No, I, I understand, and I was just trying to bring, bring this up so that it was clear to everybody exactly what we were asking, because it was a little confusing on here in the discussion as to who was going to be doing the maintenance.
It did start to sound like it was-
It was starting to sound as though we were asking for a Bedford, a road in Bedford to be put on a plan so that Goffstown Public Works truck, I just-
That's how I understood it, too.
Well, this is why I, I-
All right, can I make a comment to see if it will meet everybody's expectations? Would be an approval subject to conditions one through eight, 10 and 11, with a recommendation, not a part of the approval, that, that the applicant consider gravel access roads to the wet ponds to reach outlet structures for pipe maintenance. It's a separate-
No, you said one, 10 and 11, you did it backwards.
You got your numbers mixed up. You said nine was to come out.
Okay, excuse me then. I'm not making a motion. Then the idea would be one through eight.
Right.
The omission of nine.
And 10.
And 11, and then 10 becomes strictly a recommendation to the applicant.
So you just want to omit nine?
Cause I-
You want to omit number nine, correct Alan?
Well, no, that's what I was thinking based upon that discussion.
Number 10, even if it's part of the motion, is still only a recommendation. It's not a requirement, in any event. So it doesn't really need to be separate.
All right.
Alan, what I thought you were doing was making number 11-
Let's just do it.
Number nine, making the existing number nine and number 10 separate from that.
No, they don't need to be.
No, I'm just saying what I thought you were doing.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'm trying to make clearly two sentences.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, you try to figure it out. Please, it's getting late.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the site plan subject to the following conditions. Number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, remove number nine, 10 and 11, and stressing that number 10 is a recommendation and not a requirement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Yet I clearly understand. Any discussion on the motion? Thank you, Tim. Any discussion?
No question.
Yes.
Number 11. So Public Works is not going to get number 11?
No, they've already got it at number four.
I said, I included, I included 11.
He included 11. He, he wanted to-
Don't.
Remove number nine.
My motion was to make, to approve the site plan with number one through eight inclusive, 10 and 11 inclusive, nine being removed, and 10 being a recommendation, not a requirement.
Okay, I understand.
So, do you second that rewording of the motion, Barbara?
I didn't reword it, I just explained it.
Yes, that was exactly the same thing I just did.
Now, any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously, and thank you for your patience, Mr. Commander.
Thank you very much.
Patience?
That's what you get for being the last one on the agenda.
He was fast tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 28th.
Second.
Any discussion on the motions? You guys are way ahead of me. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously.
No, I abstain.
What was it from, July 28th?
July 28th.
Barbara abstained on that one.
Okay.
Okay, motion still carries. All right, any, any other information?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have one item that was in your correspondence of the updated packet. Just wanted to make the board aware that I wrote a letter to the Goffstown Harvest Christian Church stating that they have a few minor changes to their site plan that they wanted to implement. And I wrote to them stating that they, those would not be material changes to their site plan, and so that they would not be required to come back to the planning board. Basically, their changes are to change their curbing from granite to asphalt, change their sidewalks from-
Uh-uh.
Concrete-
Wrong.
Nope, to asphalt.
These are material changes. These are not non-material changes.
I was a little worried when I saw this letter. I was not part of the actual deliberations on this, but when I saw this, I suspected that there might be some members who recall the discussion and that-
Oh, we remember it.
Probably part of the conditions.
I would think that the board, in the discussion of this, would suggest that, that they, somehow I shuffled the deck to a point where I've lost that, whatever, for the evening here.
It's on the updated version.
Oh, well, I've lost that, too.
Here, there's another one here. You got one, Tim?
Oops, sorry, Alan.
It's okay.
I guess while you're looking at that, maybe I'll just ask the question, what happened back then to make it so that the board felt so strongly that asphalt versus concrete was a material thing?
And granite curbing.
And granite curbing.
And the removal of a grease trap, that's another big deal.
This is really all minor onsite things that don't affect neighbors or anything else.
Here again, it won't be a matter of opinion, Brian. I think that the opinion of this board is critical.
And they're decreased, they're decreasing the, the size of their kitchen to basically a non-commercial kitchen, so to require a grease trap, I guess, in that case, I would see that as an overage.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
You know, the statement that they're going to not put a commercial kitchen in the basement, put a residential kitchen, okay. What they say they're going to do is all well and good, but a year from now, when they start using it as a commercial kitchen, even though it's a little smaller, there's, we still have the, the issue of the grease trap, which should have been installed from day one. I do not consider these non-material changes. Because once you give them permission to do something less, then they can increase their use without anybody watching, and it becomes something that you can't, can't see anymore.
Megan? Do people normally come along and, and change their mind from granite to asphalt curbing? Or do they, you know, want two different sidewalk materials?
During the plan of view, sometimes things change. It's not necessarily after the fact, but I mean, my opinion is, I mean, it's not going to affect the drainage, obviously, the curbing, whether you have, you know, batuminous curbing or granite curbing. This isn't public, this isn't a walkway out on the public street either, where in those cases, say we're down the village area, and we wanted to extend a piece of sidewalk, and we already have granite and concrete, and that's what we have there, so we required that. This is a-
Private.
A private off of Daniel Plummer Road that has no sidewalks up there, right?
No.
So this is just internal sidewalks to the site.
But, but excuse me.
Yep.
One of the CIP items is sidewalks on Daniel Plummer Road?
No, college road.
No, well, in the master plan-
Oh, that's different, that's not CIP.
But this doesn't even access out to-
Well, that doesn't relate to that.
Does, does it relate to this?
No.
We don't have anything in CIP to that affect Alan at this point.
It actually accesses down off to Cody Ave, which also, I don't believe, has a sidewalk.
There's no sidewalks on Cody Ave.
So it would take-
I don't think there's any code sidewalks at all on that road.
No, this is all just internal from the parking lot area to the, to the building.
I, I agree that the, I suspected that there might be some issues with this, but I agree that the asphalt's curbing and the concrete versus asphalt is sort of a material issue. That's not material. I think three is material. Because there was huge discussion about what was the use of this site, given the various plans that came up during the part of the process. And that, that number three goes to that use density. And whereas one and two, I, I agree that there's, I mean, frankly, it sounds financial to me.
Well, my question to you, Megan, is that when they, they had to improve some of the driveways out there at the end of, outside the driveway, was there granite curbing on any of the off-site improvements associated with this access? I believe there, there were some access changes in the back of that site someplace, and I don't know whether they-
Well, you come up Cody Ave and then you take a left into the site, and the curbing may have started there. I don't remember exactly where the curbing started. I'd have to, I'd have to go take a look. I don't believe we have curbing up near there out on the street, but I'm not sure.
No, there's no, there's no curbing on Cody Ave.
Yeah, but I'm saying out on Daniel Plummer, meaning it's tying into, let's say, a piece of granite that we already have there. I don't, we don't have any granite curbing on our town right away right there that they're tying into.
Right.
I mean, if they were saying like, you know, eliminating sidewalks, or Cape Cod burn even, I might be concerned. This Cape Cod burn you can mount right up on.
Right.
And that would concern me. But vertical, as long as, we'd have to maybe be clear them. If it's vertical batuminous curbing, it's still providing, you know, a straight enough edge that the cars can't ride up on it easily. Because that's more of a safety thing, just having the vertical face of that.
So this needs to be vertical.
Well, I think, I think that these, number one and number two go to the fact that the church is probably trying to raise money to get this together, and the cost of granite versus the cost of asphalt is, is much, much greater. Concrete sidewalks are much more expensive to install than asphalt sidewalks. So these are probably requests that are, relate directly to their ability to raise funding to actually get this project built. And, you know, we can, we can be, you know, God, I can't even get the word, but we can respect their wishes to try to get the thing built at a little less money. But the grease trap is an issue that I think that we should not back down on. I think we should require the grease trap, because in the event that they do convert the residential kitchen to a commercial kitchen in the future, they would have to put it in at a later date. So I, I would be opposed to giving them relief from the grease trap. I would be okay with the other two items, though.
Yes.
Weren't they planning on putting a soup kitchen in there? Doesn't that do-
There have been a number of uses to it.
They have morphed from one to this to that.
Any type of, you know, just a residential kitchen, it's still a commercial kitchen because it's a commercial building. Who cares what it's like and what they serve? It is a commercial building.
They want to have a school in there, too, I think.
So, I don't know.
Well, if you'd like a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to-
No, I'd like to take the lead.
Well, we have to decide on something, because Brian already wrote the letter here. You can't send it.
Well, I actually sent the letter, so-
Well, that's a little bit ahead of the curve, isn't it?
If the appeal needs to be made, well, it's an, it's an administrative decision that I make, and I send the letter. And if, if the board wishes to go against what I said in my letter, then we'll have to go through the ZBA appeal process.
The what process?
The ZBA appeal process.
Appeal the administrative decision. We did it on the-
Oh, this is a-
The junkyard thing.
Wow.
Well, it wasn't a junk-
Aren't these, aren't these related to the site plan and not to the, the variance or the, whatever they got in the first place?
That's just the way that appeals of administrative decisions are made. They go through the ZBA.
So as a planner, you made a decision for the planning board, and if we don't agree with your decision, we have to go to the ZBA to have your decision changed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What the hell kind of a deal is that?
It's the deal. We didn't make it up.
Then don't ask us for a vote.
It's the, it's the right that the planner has to make administrative decisions. And if the board-
I'm not going to, I'm not going to move it.
I'm going to make a motion to appeal the, the decision, the administrative decision made by the town planner in regards to the Goffstown Harvest Christian Church modification to plans.
I'll second it.
There are a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? I vote yes. Also. Motion carries. One abstentions. Anybody else have a situation they wish to?
And just for the record, my issue as Tim is number three. So if they just want to withdraw that, then the whole thing is moot, as far as I'm concerned.
Good point.
I mean, that's all we're really, I mean, that's what we're talking about.
Number three.
Yeah, the grease trap and the commercial ki-
Then-
That's what I'm talking about. I'm bringing that to the floor. That was Tim's issue. There was one other person who, I would move to reconsider my appeal if there was a letter here on September 8th saying we no longer want to change that.
Do we want to take back the vote and allow them to, September 8th, to clarify their requirements?
No, because we have to appeal his decision.
Within 30 days.
Yeah, no, his decision, it's, his decision is the last action.
Joe, there's been a motion made and approved to appeal his decision, the administrative decision. Are there any other alternatives of which we wish to consider when in fact the-
Yes.
Sticking point is only item number three, which is the elimination of the grease trap.
We can do exactly what Barbara suggested. If, in fact, the church sends us written notification that they wish to, wish to withdraw item number three, then we can withdraw our appeal of the zoning of the, of the decision.
And that we will consider that on September 8th.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be put on any agenda till October?
That's correct.
Would we not?
As long as the appeal is filed within 30 days, then it'll go.
Yeah, but the ZBA, the ZBA, we go to the ZBA, right? So that meeting, the next meeting is September.
September 6th.
So this decision has been made enough before their meeting to go to them. Do we have to go to the next ZBA meeting, or can we go to, so we'll just go, we'll go to the next?
You can go to the October meeting.
We'll go to the October one, and then we have a chance to withdraw it in September. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't get put on the ZBA agenda for September.
Yeah, the next planning board meeting is-
September?
September 8th. And I wrote this letter today.
Right.
Sent it out. And so, I mean, there's-
Okay.
More than 30 days past that.
I just didn't want to have to go to the ZBA if we were going to be having a meeting the night after or two nights after and reconsidering.
But it would be important to at least file the- But it would be important to at least file the appeal, and then take it back if you so desire at the next meeting when you know more information.
Which is why I want to take the motion. Okay.
So, does the board have to make a motion to that effect as well, or just...
Oh, no, I think when we've done it before, once we've made the motion, that's considered a direction to file the appeal.
Okay, but I don't think there's any rescinding that.
Right.
We can do reconsideration.
Next month, hopefully.
Next month on further, submission of further information, if available. If not...
As long as you three are here, it's part of the quorum.
Pay your money and take your chances.
Does the board want to...
I'm just making a point so you know, that if you're not here, there's nobody here that can make the motion to reconsider.
Does the board want to assign someone to work with me, I guess, to...
No, it's my problem. I'll be there. When was the last time?
It's starting to sound like a song, I'll be there.
Huh?
Nothing.
All right.
The only thing I'd like to add at the end here, and there's no disrespect to Brian, but I think we should be advised of administrative decisions in the future so that we can agree or disagree with Brian, so we don't have to go through this in the future.
Well, part of the, and Brian's been asking for direction as to what he can do or not do to help try and speed up the process for people when they come in, so this is just a conundrum that, you know, it's gonna come up occasionally. Probably if you...
The problem is, I can't necessarily always afford to wait for two weeks for another planning board meeting to get guidance.
You can take and send out emails to members of the planning board anytime you want.
I respectfully disagree with that, Brian, since this whole church project was multiple years in the making.
We're not talking about a specific application, we're talking about the process...
You just said he couldn't wait two weeks.
In general. In general, we're talking about the process in general.
There's absolutely no reason that he can't communicate to members of the board, any questions that come up at any time, Brian. At a moment's notice. If someone wants to comment, that's one thing, but at the same time, if they have some thoughts or whatever, they can certainly communicate that to you, and it can be part of your decision-making process. And I think that would be a reasonable solution to that kind of thing. At least you would be aware of some things that may have occurred prior to your coming here, or any changes that we're instituting to the benefit of applicants, or whatever the case might be. But, as you well know, when you send something to me, I try to get back to you as soon as possible that if it's a question or whatever.
Yep.
And I think everybody would do that as a member of this board. You're gonna get it in an email. Any members of the board have a problem with that? I don't think it causes any problem of...
Well, it depends on how the emails are sent out, because if they're sent out to every member of the board...
Public record.
Then it has a, then it is a public record.
That's correct.
And you cannot make decisions that way.
The planner either has the ability to make the decision, or he doesn't.
Well, right now, the zoning ordinance allows me to do it, and if I make a decision that the board doesn't like, just like what happened tonight, there's a process that's spelled out in the ordinance to take care of it.
There you go.
And that's the way we gotta do it, unless we change the ordinance.
No, we try to do it the best way we can with what we got, so, and everybody's work is certainly appreciated. I'll leave it at that. I'm happy with what's going on, so. Members of the board?
Motion to a chairman.
Thank you. So, here a second. Seconded by Phil.
Oh, one thing I wanted to bring up.
You've been sitting over, I think.
No, I have. Megan is still here.
You're almost out of here.
No, no, I thought...
You've been having all early meetings, you haven't had the really late meetings at the planning board. This is nothing compared to what it can be.
Well, wait a minute, you know, you, wait, the ZBA went on for what, 1:30 in the morning?
12:45.
All right, let's get it over with, Bill, come on.
I just want the board to be aware that the Board of Select and Review, the fees for services, Megan's review, plan review.
Yes.
We had a public hearing, and they've been amended. There's a formula now that goes in, so it takes into account more of the things that go into per cost basis of charge for drainage.
Okay. But is it only Megan, or is it anybody else that reviews the public works? Because I know from time to time, other people look at these things.
Well, that's been part of the formula. A lot of it's included into the formula of who she worked with.
No matter who it is, we use them out.
So, in the end, the developers or the applicants will stop getting discounted engineering fees from the town of Goffstown?
Well, depending on how you look at it...
That's how I look at it.
They are, they are discounted quite a bit from what...
And I don't know why, but they are.
And this is why I brought it up at multiple meetings, that when Megan, when Megan gets an eight-page list of defects in a plan...
We have a motion on the floor to, I'm gonna call a motion. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
No or yo?
Yo!
See, this is what happens when you take a break in the middle of the meeting.
I apologize. When a emergency was called, but...